Franklin County Board of County Commissions, now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, November 4th. We do have quite a long agenda. Thank you to staff and everyone who helped us get this agenda prepared to take care of the people's business today. If we would, let's please stand and open with prayers and pledges. My Father, we thank you for your hand today in our lives. As we gather here today and discuss things about this county and our future, we pray that you be with us in understanding. God give us wisdom and give us discretion. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morone, does anything need to be amended on the agenda before we approve it?
Good morning, Commissioners. No, sir. Nothing that I'm aware of or has been brought to my attention. I will ask the Board today for some considerations for the Commissioners that are traveling eight hours after the meeting to attend the FWC Commission meeting on behalf of the county. So that is a long drive.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it's been published?
Second.
All right, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Cruz, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, up next, we're going to pay the county's bills and also approve minutes from the regular meeting from 8:06 and the one from 9:16 that has been revised.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Mr. Morone, were there any other public comments? I'm sorry, we were checking.
Yes, no, I do have one that came in. I'm going to go print it, but that's for, it's a Mr. Tom Moses. He's asking about Aaron's report, actually, item 14 specifically.
So the only one I have printed here is later as well.
Yep, and I don't have any others besides the one you have printed or one I just announced.
All right. Was Ms. Ginger supposed to be here about the request or is this something she submitted?
Yeah, she was supposed to be here unless she's running late and I don't know if there was any traffic between 60, no, none.
Not when I came over.
I'll send her a text reminder. It's about that grant we did need. I think it's a standard grant, Commissioners, but nevertheless, we do need it to be announced and stated at a public meeting before you, the Board can give you authorization to sign it. Is there standard Jack grant for the most part? There was nothing. Aaron looked at it. There was nothing different about it, sir. So if you want to hold on for a while and see if I can get her up, maybe send her an invite. She can appear by Zoom, something like that.
Yeah, we can do that and come back if she appears. If not, we'll just handle it before the meeting's over. I want to clarify on that last motion. I did say we're doing the bills and the minutes at the same time, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Amerson had a question. I just wanted to make sure I was right. I'd rather make sure than assume. All right. So there is nothing but information on Mr. Neighbors' report and Mr. Davis's report. Are you here for Ms. Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
All right, come on, please. Ms. Amanda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry, Ginny wanted me to apologize. She had a personal matter that came up, so she couldn't be here. So I'm here for her. We only have one action item this morning. We request the Board's approval and signing of the Emergency Management Performance Grant. It's our EMPG grant that we get every year that funds a portion of our salaries.
Okay. All right. And how much is it?
It is forty-seven thousand, nine hundred, forty-seven and eleven cents.
They moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Cruz. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Anything else, Ms. Amanda?
Ginny just wanted me to give y'all an update on the Starlinks. They've all arrived and they've been programmed and we're in the process of distributing them out now.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for that. We really appreciate it.
No problem.
Yes, I have a question.
Are y'all installing them or the fire departments install them? How does that work?
It's up to their preference. If they want us to assist in installing them, we can, but they have just a tripod stand type thing and they're already pre-set up. It's just a matter of plugging them in and plug and play at this point. But if they want our assistance, I know we're going to help Appalachian Fire Department here either late tomorrow or Thursday. And St. George Island came and picked up theirs and I believe they have theirs installed. I have to double check with them.
I would imagine, I was the comm guy, so.
He seemed like he knew what he was doing.
Well, I just know some, all are not tech side.
Yeah, we've offered, if they need assistance or want it, we are more than happy to help install it for them. But if they don't think they need it, they're more than happy to.
If it's plug and play, that's good. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Amanda.
No problem.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, same thing for Director Polis's report. There is nothing but information. Is Mr. Lovestran attending today via Zoom?
No, he's nuts.
Okay. His was all informational as well?
Yes.
So would just surround all of you. If you have anything for any of these department directors, feel free to contact them one-on-one.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question on Mr. Lovestran's report, and I know he's not here to speak on behalf of it, but it looks like he's retiring. So is that something, it looks like he's going to be here till February 3rd of 2026. Is that something that UFI Fest will hire someone or is that something that, okay?
Yes.
Send us a new air.
Thank you.
As far as I understand, that is the way it goes.
Actually, I'll probably ask him, make a note, ask him to appear at your next December 1st, the first meeting in December, so that you guys could, you know, I mean, thank him and then talk to him some more. I know it's February, but I don't know how much leave time he has.
Yeah, he's taken leave, so it's January. Really, probably not going to be working a whole lot.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Whitney Roundtree?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The only action item I have for you is a letter of support for the Library's Transforming Communities Accessible Small and Rural Communities Grant. This is a grant through the American Library Association specifically for small and rural libraries to improve accessibility for individuals with disabilities by engaging their communities in identifying local barriers and implementing practical improvements. We're requesting funds to address physical access barriers, specifically the East Point Branch, which currently lacks an automatic door opener and has limited high-contrast wave-finding signage. We do have an automatic door opener at the Caribou Branch. And part of the grant requirement is a letter of support from the governing body, so I've attached a draft of that letter of support.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? Seeing no questions, what's the pleasure in the Board?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, Ms. Whitney.
Okay, thank you. Michael, if you can just, whenever it's ready, just send it over to me. I can upload it right into the grant portal.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Did you have any other questions about my report or our annual stats?
Commissioners, any questions?
Just thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Y'all stay busy as usual. Thank you for what that means to our population to have a public library or these public libraries.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Morone, is Ms. Howes going to be here? We talking on her behalf?
I just checked. I saw she sent an email. She said she was going to be here. Can we go and come back? Let me see if I can reach her by phone.
Okay. What about Mr. Jones? Is that an extra presentation again?
McClellan said he was coming.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Jones. He's not going to be here. Mr. McClellan was supposed to be here on his behalf, their behalf.
I guess that time change.
I guess when we.
Might be.
They just figured I would stay late because last time we were here, I had to stay forever.
Between the time change on my little shift on the agenda to move them up early, I guess they caught everybody off guard, huh? Let me go ahead and I guess.
There's Mr. McClellan.
That's Mr. McClellan.
What is this thing doing?
Hey, Jim, are you, Jimmy, you ready? You walked in just in time. I just want to let you know.
We discussed the resolution last meetings. I don't want to bore you with extraneous information. I do want to say one more time, though, emphatically, the resolution that we've recommended that you pass does not oppose dredging. It simply tries to do, Mr. Schuler, last time we were here, if I put it in a nutshell, he reminded me of Ronald Reagan's quote, "Trust but verify." What the Corps of Engineers basically has said is, "Trust that we're going to come up with a plan that you're all going to love. We're not going to give you any input into it other than the public process, but we're going to go over here in our silo and come up with a plan that makes it past regulatory agencies at the federal and state level that doesn't get tied up in court for years and that as a byproduct of that, you may or may not get more water in the places you need it." The resolution says, "We would rather be a part of that process so we can verify that we're going to get what we want."
The only thing I can say, Mr. Jim, for myself, not on behalf of the Board, because I know how things are, I've looked up and seen how some things have went in the past. The issue you have when you're dealing with an entity like the Corps of Engineers, and trust me, I have firsthand knowledge of this. So when you're talking to the navigation folks, you're talking to the navigation folks. When you're talking to the environmental folks, you're talking to environmental. And they probably do talk to each other, but you can't get that out of them. So that becomes an issue. The only thing I would be very wary of, unless it was absolutely necessary, is us ever getting back into something like happened about fifteen, sixteen years ago where the county entered a lawsuit with the Corps. The result was they stopped dredging, period. So I would be very leery. I know we're a part of this RCSC. We want to be involved in the conversation. We don't want to be drugging the conversation. You know, that's the only thing I'll say.
I have seen multiple lawsuits against the Corps. I haven't seen it do anything other than A, give them a reason not to talk to anybody and B, drag out everything. And that's the point of all this, is if they'll listen to us, we've got invaluable resources that we can bring to the table. We can help them keep from stepping on themselves and that's what we would like to do.
Yeah, I'm good with all that. To further clarify, like I tried to mention some couple of years ago when they did a symposium in Tallahassee about the river system. They were talking about the problem at the time that we still had water wars going on. And at that time, there was, the guy that was presenting was like, "Well, Georgia's having a problem supplying water and everything in Georgia. So let's act like there's not a Florida, right? There's just Georgia. These are the problems we're running into." I said, "Okay, let's take that," I raised my hand, "so let's take that a step further. There's still not a Florida, but Appalachia Cola is part of Georgia. Now what's your scenario?" See what I'm saying? Because at the end of the day, it either doesn't get here or it does end up here. Our only choice is to make sure we're adamant to support our local people and our local area to the best of our ability. That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, and I think that's one of the reasons that this is, I'll give you one more reason, is if we're aligned with, if there's an economic interest in navigation and it's supported by the folks in South Georgia and South Alabama, they're benefiting from it, then that changes the dynamic so that it's Florida, South Georgia, South Alabama asking for more water. Because, you know, let's be real, we're competing with Atlanta, six million people. The more we can stick together, both as our six counties and wherever possible with Tri Rivers and those folks, we've got a lot more leverage.
Yes, sir. And so the biggest economic input for Franklin County probably will be the fact that we'll get more fresh water into our bay that's supposed to be a mix of salt and fresh, that it currently is more salty than probably it's ever been. So that would be our biggest right-of-way benefit. Because like I've told people, especially lately with the rules that are coming up for opening the bay to oyster again, fixing the bay or fixing the problems in the bay is not as simple as just doing one thing and calling it done. There's about eight or nine things that have affected this over the years. But getting water is a really big part of it. So I don't know that we'll ever give you an ROI, you know, in Franklin County for millions of dollars that will be done by river traffic, but getting that water to this bay can potentially have unknown benefits that we can't quantify.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do. And I spoke with Mr. Jones about this last week, but on the resolution, you know, you're saying that you're not opposed to dredging.
Right.
But if you look down where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that Franklin County, Board of County Commissions urges the US Army Corps of Engineers to reject a return to full-scale dredging on the Appalachia Cola River." Why wouldn't we just in there say, "We reject a return to traditional full-scale dredging"? Because the way I'm interpreting this is that it makes it look like the Board of County Commissions of Franklin County doesn't want any dredging. And that's not, that's not how I feel. I'm only one of five. I mean, I would, that was kind of my hang-up with the resolution because it looks as though we're saying we don't want any full-scale dredging on the Appalachia Cola River, period. And the Corps of Engineer is, you know, it's black or white, period, with them. And I don't want to take, I don't want it to be perceived that we're telling the Corps, "We don't want any of you dredging" and then just pick up their toys and go home, so to speak. I took that directly from the position paper produced by Tri Rivers. And Tri Rivers is an organization that is behind, that has, by their own estimates, $300 million worth of economic benefit. They are pushing it hard. They're the only reason that we're having this conversation. They forced the Corps. They got them $100 million to fix the dams and locks. They got them $3 million to start this environmental process. Phil Clayton, who I'm sure all of you know, those are Phil Clayton's words, "Nobody wants the full-scale dredging. It is not economically sustainable or environmentally sustainable." That's where that came from. So if we need to clarify it further, I'm happy to do that. But just so you know, it's not, that's not the, like, you know, that's not something we made up on your behalf. That's something we said. Even the people that want this badly know that we can't do it like we did before. The reason Phil is saying that is he knows that the easiest thing for the Corps of Engineers to do is first, nothing. But second, is to simply go back and dust off the plan that they had before, change the dates on it, and come back and say, "Okay, Florida, you help us pick which color binder to put it in." And so Phil knows that the way to head this off is to make sure the Corps knows upfront, "We're not going back to that plan. We need to sit down and talk about how wide this channel needs to be, how deep it needs to be, where the sand's going to go," and all those conversations need to happen. That's the reason I went with that, but I'm happy to do whatever we need to do to get you comfortable with it.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's, because I spoke with Mr. Jones yesterday, I think that's why the confusion is with this Board is because of this sentence here. To me, I was thinking that you guys were wanting to not dredge at all, and that's kind of where the confusion is. Mr. Chairman, Attorney Schuler, have you had time, opportunity to look over this?
I've never received a copy of it to look at.
Okay. I personally feel more comfortable if Attorney Schuler could look this over before we approve it, in my opinion. And then, of course, the language about the reject return to full-scale dredging, those are my only concerns.
Yep. So can we, can we verify with, and I'm not meaning anything, can we verify through Mr. Clayton, which he's referenced here this morning, that that is indeed the language that they have in theirs also? I mean, I'm just asking, can that be done?
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
He's saying that the language there, that phrasing, is used by another resolution that was done in Alabama.
Okay.
It's in the position paper. I'll send you the position paper and you can verify it with Phil, but it's in their position paper and then he was quoted in a Politico article.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, until we get the language that we want on that resolution and put our names on it, I think we need to table this issue. We need to instruct Mr. Schuler what we want on there, and then we need to table the issue and bring it back when it's done like it needs to be done. What do you think of it?
Well, I was going to ask, what kind of time constraint are we on here?
I think they're going to roll something out in February and we're trying to get ahead of that. We've got four of the six counties today. You would make five, and then Jackson is the last one that we haven't gotten to yet.
Well, as long as we get the language like we want it, you won't have to continue coming down here. We can sign it without you being here. That's not a problem.
That would be great. I would encourage you also to look higher up in the resolution. I don't have it right in front of me, obviously, but there is a sentence in there that directly says, "I believe we do not oppose, we support navigation, we do not oppose dredging." I think it's the fourth bullet.
I would say we could do an approval contingent on Attorney Schuler, but I want to make sure this language is okay. So I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Sanders and I'll just make a motion to table this issue until we can get it further clarified.
To the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
I work for y'all. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to go out.
So we're trying to handle time sensitive. We're putting it on the next agenda is what the motion is.
And you will have an answer at that point. And you don't have to come down. We can. And you don't have to come down, we can just.
That'll be December?
No, maybe two weeks from now.
Oh, okay, great, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Schuler, if you have any questions, please call me.
All right, so we do have a motion to table by Commissioner Ward.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Amoson. To do it, I'll have the next meeting. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Ms. Howes is here.
What's she at?
Yeah.
Great. One less text I'm trying to manage right here.
Definitely to have there.
Yeah.
That's what I just said to Michael. She hears us talking about her.
I think she does.
Yeah, I'll do it. When she will.
We're just waiting. Thank you, Mr. Jim. We appreciate it. Ms. Stephanie Howes? Let's talk about the Nest.
Yes, my favorite subject.
I'm sure it is.
We're doing great things.
There you are.
I thank you all so much for letting me visit with you guys this morning. I've actually come to ask for your support in a letter that we would like to send to Senator Cory Simon and Representative Jason Cho for an appropriations request for the 26, '27 fiscal year. It's in the amount of $107,040. It is to offset the funding deficit due to, I'm sure you've heard of the budget cutbacks in the Department of Education. This year, we've received a $210,000 cutback. And we probably could make it through, but the problem is, is when you cut the overall award amount, it also cuts your 10% threshold on administrative services. And unfortunately, that hits our garbage service, our utility, our water, our telephone, our internet, things of that nature. So this funding request would help offset those administrative costs where they seem to go over that 10% threshold. I went ahead and prepared a letter, hoping that it would make things easier for you. I sent it.
It does.
And the only thing you would need to do is review it. If it is to your approval, you would just need to fill in the top. It does highlight the services that we provide. I am proud that we provide services countywide to students from every city within the county. We did have a site in Appalachia Cola, but we know due to the city hall closing that we lost that site. It is our hopes to get that back when we can find adequate space at an affordable rate. But we do now have a site in Carabel and in East Point, serving 120-plus students. They are the most at-risk students in our county. They're in the lower 25 percentile of, or we actually prioritize that. We accept other students, but they usually come from the lower 25 percentile in reading and math. We accept those first. We're also proud that we accept on-demand foster students that if a foster care home here in the county takes a child from DCF just last minute, we find a space for them immediately so that those foster parents, parents can continue to work. And I think that's really important, a great service that we do. Last thing I'm really proud of is not a lot of 21st century programs throughout the state, except students who are on the spectrum or who have other behavioral, I don't want to say disabilities, but, but things that need to be. Our staff is trained to also handle those, and that keeps those parents that normally could not find after-school care or care for their children, for them to be able to keep working. And that's, to me, a wonderful thing in Franklin County, is to keep those parents working. All of our staff, they're DCF-certified, 45 hours of DCF training, CPR certified, they've got the best training that I could ask for, and I think it's a great program. I think it's been absolutely vital to the residents of Franklin County. So I do respectfully ask for you to please support us as we go for this appropriations request.
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie.
Yes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to say that I know that you don't only, you're, you're not really giving yourself and the Nest enough credit, in my opinion, because not only do you do the, on, kids on the spectrum, you also do other kids. I know my goddaughter goes there, she always talks about how much fun they have, and they do learn, and it's really a big help to our parents that do work, that they can't get off till 5:00, and they don't have daycare by other means. So they go to the Nest, the bus goes and gets them and brings them to the Nest. So, I mean, you guys do have, you, you perform a very great service to our county, and if there's anything I can do to help, I actually called the other day, I was going to try, when y'all were going through those shifts, and I, and I think you were gone to lunch, or anyway, I was going to call back and never got a chance. But nonetheless, anything I can do to help, I, I do think that, obviously, I want Attorney Schuler to look over the letter, make sure it's okay. But I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this contingent on Attorney Schuler's approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve this letter of support by Commissioner Ward. It's been seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion or any more questions, Commissioners?
I just support it.
Yeah.
And if you listen to the news any at all, they have kept that. And it's, it's happening all over this area.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is, I mean, they're talking about how bad it is in South Georgia, but we're, we're just as bad, you know? So anything that we can keep that program going, because it is a, a real good program for the parents and for the children, and it even helps Stephanie, because she loves working with them kids.
I do, I've held on to my teaching certificate, because I keep thinking I might go back into the classroom, but my heart is with the Nest.
I know, you've always been a teacher.
It really is. So, while I'm here, I also just wanted to give you.
Hold on, just a second, Ms. Stephanie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you could, you could, we haven't voted yet, though.
Correct.
Any, any additional discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I got a question, too.
Sure.
So, I hate that it's not in Appalachia anymore.
Yes, I do, too.
I'm glad it is still in the county.
Yes, yes.
How many residents in Appalachia Cola do you think serve?
We, we actually have 57 students who are coming to our East Point site from Appalachia Cola. And what we did in order to assist those parents who don't have transportation to East Point, is I contracted with, well, I shouldn't say contracted, because they are running an activity bus. And they pick those students up and return them in the evening to ABC School, and parents can pick them up there. That way, they don't have to travel. So we've taken every possible measure we can to still include the students of Appalachia Cola and want them desperately. We want to be countywide and serve all of the students.
So prior to the dissolvement of the building here in Appalachia Cola, what was the numbers? Was it 56 or more?
Actually, we were having a hard time getting to the bottom of that, because I was, I didn't become the director until they actually didn't renew their grant. And at the last minute, we were able to step in. There were a lot of paperwork and juggling with the state. They allowed us to take it over, but with no additional funds. So you guys graciously gave us $10,000 to help offset that. We, they were running, I would say around 60, 65. They had 80 on the roll, but that's not how many were actually attending. We found we've, we've got a, a very, the word I'm looking for, they're, they're really attending now. I mean, they're not, it's not sporadic. We kind of hold them to a "you must attend" standard, or you lose your spot, because we have a waiting list. And we, we want the, the students who most need it to get, to get it. So those that are truly participating every day are staying in their slots.
Well, y'all do a good job, or great job.
Thank you.
I hope to continue to support the Nest.
Thank you.
And your staff, you've got a good staff.
Yes, I do. I'm very proud of them. They, they are really invested in it, and that's where their heart is. It's hard to commit to a three-hour-a-day-only job. And now do, some do come from the school as a second job, but some it is their only source of income, and they're really committed to those students.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, go ahead, Ms. Stephanie.
I just wanted to share with you guys, if I could give you one of these. We do have, if you'll share it, may I approach? Or can I? There we go.
Thank you.
We have several other ways that we're trying to raise funds right now. One, we have a raffle going on for a handmade cast net that's made by Mr. Eugene King, lifelong resident of Franklin County. The supplies were donated by Fisherman's Choice. But this is our official GoFundMe. The goal is to raise 210,000. That's what our shortfall is this year. The appropriation you just voted on is for next year. So if you know of anyone that wants to contribute, I'm not saying you, I'm just saying, can you share that? The problem is, is if you make a copy, it won't work. So if you put it in your back pocket, or your purse, or wallet, and you run into somebody that, that wants to donate, $5 is fine. $2 is fine, any amount at this, at this point, we are, are very appreciative of. And so if you would just share that, maybe put it up at your business, or challenge others, okay? Does anyone have any questions about the?
I got one question. What is that on MacArthur and FUC?
First United Methodist Church Youth and Children's Center. And let me explain that further. There are other umbrella programs that run under that. Of course, they're not, they don't use our grant money, but we have Friday Night Youth that is run by Charles Petty. We have Cooking with Kids, once a month on Saturdays, where women come in and they work with children, and it's anyone throughout the county. We put up flyers everywhere. They can come in and they do a cooking class with them. We also have Glow, which is a kind of a girls' retreat weekend where we help with hygiene, life skills, just different things, picking out outfits, you know? And the, oh, and they do Backpack Buddies as well. So all of that's under the umbrella of First United Methodist Church Youth and Children's Center. I will tell you, we are one of only two faith-based 21st century programs in the whole state. That does not mean we indoctrinate. I don't want you to think that the state allows us to do that. However, to me, it raises the bar, because all of our staff must sign that statement of faith. We're, we're not, we're, we're doing the Level 2 background checks. We're, we're making sure that these are really vetted individuals who work for us, that, you know, too many times you get into situations where kids can be manipulated, and we're not, we're just there to teach. We're, we're just there to do academics and, and character education, physical education, and other personal enrichment, such as arts and culture.
Mr. Chairman, well, you stole my pitch. I was going to pitch the cast net raffle for you, but you beat me to it.
Yes, I'm, I'm really excited about that, and, you know, those tickets seem to be going like hotcakes. Obviously, he's a really good net maker. And they're really coveted, so that was really nice of him to do that.
I'm glad we got that plug in, either way.
Yes, sir.
But, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you know, whenever Appalachia Cola, the city of Appalachia Cola lost that 21st century grant, I'm not, I can't remember the timeframe on it exactly. I don't believe Commissioner Krum was here at the time. You know, it put, it put a lot of families right there that was in, in jeopardy. A lot of our employees as a county and the community as a whole. Well, I'd reached out and talked to Ms. Howes about it, and they graciously took that under their, their umbrella. And like she stated before, she ran that program under the same budget. It cost them money, we kicked in a 10,000. Erin, you're online, I'm just curious, where did that money come from? Out of what account?
Parks and Recreation.
Yes, Commissioner, that actually came from the Youth Rec Program Support Line item in the Parks and Recreation budget. And that's historically the funds that would go whenever the youth sports teams, you know, travel to state, items of that nature.
Well, I was just, you know, I got to thinking about it when she was talking about the challenges they're facing this year. I know they had a challenge last year, and now with all the cutbacks, they're right back in the same, same pool. And I was going to ask if the other Commissioners would consider, you know, doing that 10,000 for them again to help them. I mean, they are hitting the ground fundraising as hard as they can. And again, you know, I'll go over there quite a bit, and, and I see parents from the road departments, Parks and Recs, parents. I mean, all of our kids are, are, you know, their, their parents are employees at the county and everywhere else. But, I mean, it is, it's, it's a viable part of the, the community. Without that program, it, it would really put a, a kink in the lives, daily lives of the working parents in this county, both county employees and, and other individuals, many other individuals. So anyway, that was my pitch. Do I need to make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Well, I think it'd be more. I think it'd be more, is it, Ms. Stephanie?
Yes, sir.
I know everything's time-sensitive. Commissioner, would you be opposed to us having it on the next agenda?
That'd be perfectly fine. Yeah, that's fine.
For us to consider.
All right.
That would be wonderful. I will tell you one of the, one last thing. With the budget cut, we normally are open 10 service days when the school is closed. And as you know, they have a lot of closures this year, if you've looked at the school calendar. This past Friday, or Thursday and Friday, we were closed because of the budget deficit. On Monday and Tuesday, we have raised enough money to be open. But as we raise money, that will determine on those service days if we will be able to be open. There's also 20 additional days in the summer. We're usually open the whole month of June and July. Right now, we're slated to be closed in July. So that is why we are fundraising and doing everything we can to do that. So that would be so much appreciated if you are able to do that. The parents would be beyond thankful.
Mr. Chairman, that's when they need you to be open the most.
It is, because, of course.
Those are the ones.
It's tourist season and, in the summer, and yes, the, the days that are all day. I should mention that we do receive food substance assistance from the school on regular school days, but on days that were open all day, we do not. That is up to us completely to, to feed all 120 children out of, out of our pocket. That can get kind of expensive, too. So, yes, anything, anything would help. So, thank you so very much.
Mr. Rowan, do you need any action from us to be able to add that to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I'd have to report for the next one.
Next meeting.
Okay, thank you all so very much for taking the time to see me and for approving that request for the, the letter, okay? And if you need more information on it, I'd be glad to give it to you, Mr. Rowan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders, thank you.
Mr. Rowan, did you ever get anything back from Ms. Coulter?
Not yet, so I guess we can go straight to, Erin, if you'd like.
Okay, well, before we do that, let's take a five-minute recess. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. We're going to Ms. Erin Griffith's report.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ms. Erin, we don't have any bid openings today, correct?
We do not. Actually, we had a 45-day advertising requirement for the Restore Countywide Dune Construction Project. And those bids, unfortunately, as advertised, we had everything being due today. So we did issue an addendum, whereas we actually delayed the bid opening until the next meeting due to that, because 45 days ago, of course, we initially did the advertising, since we didn't realize that our meetings were gonna shift until Tuesday for the month of November.
Okay. So I do have a couple of people that want to speak publicly on your item, and I would now call for Ms. Cheryl Klaus, if she's, I think she's attended via Zoom, Michael. And the reason I'm doing this is because, as is consistent with what we have been doing, unless some Commissioners want to pull one of these to talk about them individually, they will be voted on as consent items. So is Ms. Klaus available for comment?
She said on here she would raise her hand, but. And she just did.
Yeah, okay. You ready?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. What about Mr. Tom Moses?
I have no comment on that either. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, before we consider these own consent, are there any items you would like to pull to discuss individually?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna pull number three.
Anyone else? All right, so there are 11 action items, so I would consider entertaining a motion for one, two, and four through 11.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Krum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Erin, let's talk about number three.
Okay. As the 2026 legislative session is beginning earlier than usual, the county's legislative line item appropriation requests are due to the state this month. The project concepts below have been submitted to the board for consideration. We have Sylvester Williams Park Energy Efficient Storm Rated Sports Lighting. The estimate is attached. The Planning Assistance Grant to complete an update of the county's comprehensive plan. That was something that was discussed, actually, at the last meeting. The county does need a comprehensive overhaul. Those efforts are usually very time-consuming and expensive. And in the past, you know, large overhauls have actually been funded, actually, I believe it was back from the park planning days. So we would like to do a request for that. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers submitted a planning assistance proposal to address the critically eroding shoreline segment around Sykes Cut. We're requesting the local match to actually have that city completed with Army Corps. The fire truck for Alligator Point, St. James Volunteer Fire Department, that was actually carried over from last year, as it was not funded, and a fire truck toward the St. George Island Volunteer Fire Department. And the board action was to appear, to approve the list of projects above for submittal as the county's legislative line item appropriation requests.
Sorry, sorry, Erin, I didn't mean to interrupt. Mr. Chairman, I had her pull this, because I know we talked in the past about a shooting range in East Point. I, I do realize that the Humane Society, it needs to be moved. I know that we talked with FWC to try to get one through them, but it was gonna be, I would like to call a logistical issue, because.
And their requirements.
And the requirements were too stiff, because they wanted it manned, there was all these rules. And really, truly, all I want is where somebody can go and sight in their rifle for hunting season, and/or shoot their pistol if they want. We don't need anything fancy. But the Humane Society is definitely wanting it moved, and I can understand why. I was thinking we could move it to the county-owned property up on 65, but again, that's property that we're looking at for, towards, for the Team Franklin program, which I don't believe that's gonna be for another, it's gonna be a while before that takes place, because the, if, if we develop property, it's gonna be the school board property first. So I don't know if we could put in like a make, you know, a couple, a pole barn, a couple picnic tables, and a berm there, and then when Team Franklin comes, you know, but then we'd have to move it again. So I kinda want y'all's opinion and thoughts. I don't know, I hate to put you on the spot, but we've gotta do something with, with it at the, I was out there the other day, and, and all I heard was just pop, 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 and they're trying to walk dogs, and they're trying to, I mean, I know it, so there's times where it's, it's not used, but the times that it is used, and they're out there trying to walk the dogs, the dogs are barking, it's just, it's not conducive. I don't know, I know that the shooting range was there first, I do get that, but, you know, we, we kinda need to figure out a way to, to kinda help move it somewhere else. So that was my thought. I know, you know, I'd asked about a legislative appropriation last year, and I, I believe our, our folks said it's probably not a good idea to, to put that as a request, so I took it away. I don't know what to do, in terms of any of that.
So I do think we need to discuss options. I, I think maybe the best next step to do, and it shouldn't take long, is to find out from the Humane Society if they're good with moving, even if it means moving from East Point to Appalachia or somewhere else.
I don't, I don't think they wanna move.
Well, then, they, they can't stay where they are and move at the same time. That's impossible, because we are limited on what we have in East Point. But I know, and I'm just throwing this out there, I'm not speaking for the board, but we have this property that we're doing a land swap with Duke, that's where the ABC School used to be, that's out kind of away from the neighborhood, and kind of more secluded. But, I mean, you know, that, that would be up to the Humane Society if that's what they would wanna do.
And that's what I was thinking about, too. We got the property over there, and one thing that we're talking about right now is potential tower on that property over in that plot.
Right. And that tower wouldn't interfere with what they're doing.
Right.
But now, we don't have the property yet, I understand that.
Yeah.
But we're, we're in the works of that, correct?
Yes, I, I've included an update in the informational items in my report. Commissioned approval on the, the issue of a tower on that location, I will tell the board that Ms. Erin had asked me, or was talking to me about that, and I told her that as part of this land swap, the purpose of the land swap was for Duke Energy to construct a new tower in the Bowery section of Appalachia Cola. So I have reached out to their council that I've been working with on the land swap, and asked them, is it possible for us to co-locate a, a fire and rescue antenna on their new tower? Do not have an answer yet, but the, the question has been forwarded on to Duke Energy. So it may be, we can save the cost of constructing a tower, and, and put it in a, a more central location, but I just haven't really had an occasion or a need to inform the board of that discussion between Erin and myself until now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'll reach back out to the Humane Society. I don't think they're gonna wanna move, but I will, I will, I will do it again.
Can I ask you, so who owns the old ABC property? Is it still ABC School Board?
Well, it's, it's coming to us as part of that land swap.
Well, that's adjacent to the old ABC.
Oh, it's okay.
ABC still own it?
Give, give me a second, and I'll tell you.
Sorry, I'm, I didn't mean to.
While he's researching, maybe y'all can refresh my memory, but then we reached out to the state to see if the state would build a firing range, but we didn't have the adequate population, is that what they?
Which population plus they wanted to be.
That was one thing, but then they also wanted it manned, they wanted it certain criteria, built a certain way, looked a certain way, and we'd have to get liability insurance. I mean, there was all these rules. And Michael and I decided at the end of the day, that's just too much, because, again, all our folks want is to go out and shoot their guns. They don't need it manned, they don't need it, you know? So I was just trying to, to wrap my head around how we could accommodate that and move it from the Humane Society, but.
I remember when I first got on, we had had that discussion. I was just wanting to refresh my.
We have, in the past, I, as we've approached the forestry, we've approached FWC, we have approached everybody about a shooting range somewheres, and they're not. And my concern is this, Jessica, if we go, anywhere we go out there in that area, around the jail and, and all that, you're still gonna, and you leave the Humane Society where it's at, they're still gonna hear the gun popping. It may not be as strong, but some of that high power, just that, they're gonna keep on hearing it. So.
They may got it at the Sheriff's Office, too, so.
Do y'all have any, any place on the east side of the county that, 'cause I know Appalachia got that range, and we got one in East Point. Anything on the east side?
I don't know, I know the city of Carebell, I know Commissioner Tony Melander tried several times to get a place over there, and nothing's, nothing's set forth, so. I mean, it's something we're gonna have to look at in the future, and you would think that with as many acres as what we have in state ownership, you'd think somewhere along the way we could let it, but I don't think.
And the Humane Society do not wanna move, is what they're saying?
The last I spoke, the, the directors, yeah, no, they don't wanna move, so. Because they own, they own that property, and they own that building.
Right.
So.
So, yeah.
But I will reach back out to them.
Is this something for the legislative stuff we're talking about?
Well, that's why I brought it up.
Are you wanting to, are you wanting to add it to the legislative request again?
No, because that's why I was wanting y'all's opinion, because if we do, and we say they give us money, then what are we gonna do with it?
Well, you could ask them for land and money.
That's true, that's true.
You could ask them for five acres and money.
That's the key. Getting them state, that's what I would do, Commissioner. I'm, I'm gonna check.
State land, I mean, they don't have any hundreds, thousands.
I don't know if they want state land, but.
Well, they keep promising to start giving land back to some of the rural counties.
I was about to say, the ag commissioner keeps talking about it. Ask for 20, and if we get five, we got something.
Let's do that. Can we do that?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
So Erin, if, I'm gonna make a motion to ask for 20 acres of property in a shooting range up Highway 65.
Well, and the money to do the shooting.
The money to do the shooting range.
Funding and land.
Okay. Funding, since it's primitive, probably 50,000, the funding component?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Should we say 65, or? No, 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 no. Should we say? No, not about, talking about.
I mean, let's go 400.
I'm talking about geographic right now, so. Should we say Highway 65, or should we say in Franklin County?
Well, that's in Franklin County.
Well, the majority, the thing about it is, the majority of that state land would be 65 and centrally.
Well, the majority, the thing about it is, the majority of that state land would be sixty-five and centrally located.
I think that would be the better area just geographically to support, you know, people as far as their commute or whatever.
But at the same time, I didn't want to, I wanted to broaden just in case they say not up to sixty-five.
Yeah.
That would always hit the whole county.
Yeah. Only problem over on our end over here is all you got really to stay on right now is just the box yard management area. Everything else, we would have to, you know, reach out to a cattle company that has no cows. But anyway, we'll just leave that.
We need to do that as well.
All right, so was that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
Our second or motion?
So let me make sure. We're making a motion here, Ms. Erin, to add to our legislative request fifty thousand dollars to build a shooting range and twenty acres of state-owned land from the state to do it.
Okay. In Franklin County or up sixty-five? Did we make a determination?
How do I feel about that?
I say sixty-five, cause that's where most of our state land is.
That gives them the greatest flexibility with their state-owned lands. It's most of it's in the center of the county. All right, so we do have a motion to approve that by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I need to cut in. I'm sorry. I apologize to, I'm sorry, I need to apologize to the public in the room. I just realized I was having some technical difficult, well, I've been having technical difficulties for a couple of weeks now, but yesterday I did. Erin's report is not on the printed agenda. It's everywhere else. It's not there. I apologize, you guys. I'll get you copies after the meeting, okay? If you need it, but electronically, you could have gotten that from yesterday or, you know, whenever, so. I'm sorry. So I just needed to say that because I was looking and I saw people out there looking and I wanted to, you know, to think we're all, well, we all crazy, but you know, so.
Well, this Microsoft, this Microsoft Teams thing is probably about to drive you crazy.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. On the fire truck for Alligator Point, that's the fire truck for Alligator Point slash St. Teresa Volunteer Fire Department.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it's a pumper truck is what they're, they're looking for, for the St. Teresa.
I didn't, didn't wanna go to the wrong department.
That's right.
St. James has got one, didn't they?
Yes.
To answer the question, ABC School still owns the old charter school site.
They do? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's interesting.
Anything else, Ms. Erin?
Well, see, I do have some miscellaneous project updates for you all if you'd like for me to go through those.
Yes, please.
Okay, Landarch EMS. Commissioner Sanders was available for the preliminary walkthrough inspection with the building official. We have also requested a change order from the contractor to be able to proceed with ordering appliances for the location in order for it to be turnkey for EMS. We hope to have that to you all for the next meeting. Restore Countywide Dune Vegetation Project. I met with contractors this morning. And the planting efforts are beginning on St. George Island. They are actually starting at the Twelfth Street West location, and they will be moving to the east. That should take about a week and a half to get St. George Island Gulf Beaches planted. From there, they will be heading on to Alligator Point. There will be some tricky access points for Alligator Point. But the contractor had, you know, actually the MRD and associates will be on hand. They will be there with the contractors as well. They're gonna be onsite, and as far as for the difficult access areas, the contractors have been told to actually drive as close as possible. Try to utilize the ties to their advantage, so during periods of, you know, low tide, they'll actually drive as close as possible to the water line to not impede on any sort of private property owner's rights. And the Restore Countywide Dune Restoration Project, as I mentioned earlier, the actual construction portion of the project, we did delay. The bid responses won't be due until your next meeting. We'll be opening those along with Patent Drive CEI and Patent Drive Construction. And the SGI Multi-Use Path, that project's gonna begin as soon as we receive the fully executed construction contract back from the contractor, so that will also be beginning probably sometime in the next week or so.
Ms. Erin, remind me, how much of that path are we doing with this project?
We are doing from third to third.
All right. And, okay, and the, just so the board is aware, in an upcoming meeting, we're also gonna have Ms. Erin, aren't we scheduling a public hearing about the TDC Spending Plan Amendment?
We are, yeah. That's actually going to be held at your next meeting as well. That's actually on the calendar for eleven o'clock at the next meeting.
Right. So since the statute has changed, Commissioners, and we can actually do more things with the money, we need to amend the spending plan to include some of those types of things, just to make you aware so when you see it, you'll know what it is. Anyone have anything for Mr. Griffin? Ms. Erin, thank you. We appreciate everything you do.
Mr. Chairman, I did ask Erin if I didn't hear from Ginger by now, if she would just go ahead and address that for us so we could get that approved for the
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Okay. The late add item for the Sheriff's JAG Grant, the FCSO Drug Investigations Officer. Attached to this agenda is a federal JAG Grant Award Agreement for the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. This grant is for approximately thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and will fund approximately sixty-five percent of the salary and benefits of one full-time drug investigations officer. So a board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached grant award agreement.
All right.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carron. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, Ms. Erin?
That's it, Commissioners. Yeah. Hope y'all have a great, great day.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, Mr. Marone, we're up to you.
All right, Commissioners. So the first three items in my report basically can be done in consent. One, of course, is Alligator Point, St. Teresa, their Christmas parade. It's to pay, the second is to pay for your code enforcement officer to attend the class. We discussed the class in more detail at the last meeting. And you ship L-HAP, which is standard every year, to get that approved. You know, the L-HAP is a, well, I kind of explained what it is.
Send me to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Michael, when is that class supposed to be that we're trying to schedule her for?
For, for the, CCI?
Yeah.
December first to the fourth in Gazeville.
All right, thank you. All right, any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, item four, discussion item, basically this carries over from the workshop that we had last week, correct? Yeah, last week. And if needed for any answers, Commissioner Rodrigo is online. I ask him to please be online when we discuss this item. So we know we have the money from the legislature to purchase these bear-resistant canisters. Trying to use the right terminology. We have, there was considering, well, the board wanted to decide whether should we do it prior to discussing mandatory pickup or at the same time. Based on the workshop, I got the impression, let's go ahead and buy the canisters. We will deal with mandatory at a future date. So here we are. The only new I don't know what you wanna call it, is when Mr. David Telesco mentioned that some of this money could be used to purchase cans from our current providers. I haven't done any research on that yet, Commissioners, if that's something you want me to look into, or just go ahead and deal with with Rodrigo based on the quote that he gave us, and go ahead and purchase the cans and start that process. Just need some direction from the board.
So I wanna clarify something before we get started. The, I wanna make sure what Mr. Rodrigo has is consistent with what you have here in our report, or if it's just a typo. It's actually one million and sixty thousand?
Oh!
So is his number of cans based on the number you have printed or the
It's one million and sixty thousand?
Yes. One point zero six.
Okay.
Yeah, sixty thousand or buy another four cans.
It's fifty-four at least.
Well, it'll reduce the number because I gave him a lot more funding than what we actually got approved for then.
Yeah. So I just didn't know what his three thousand seven hundred ninety-three was based on. What, you had printed here or one point zero six?
And I'm so sorry about that, Commissioner. I don't know why I did the one million and sixty thousand.
It's still late last night.
And Rodrigo, you're online. I see you're unmuted. You can go ahead and tell us how you did the quote, sir. Good morning.
Yes, yes. I believe the previous estimate that you provided me, Michael, was a million six thousand. So if you'll see, this quote is about fifteen, or sorry, a little bit more than that. Just short of that to encompass as many carts within that quantity, but the, but the confirmed amount is a million sixty thousand?
Yes. I apologize for that, sir. I gave you the wrong amount.
No problem. I can get that updated very quickly, but yes, it'll, it'll amount, we'll be able to add a couple of more in there.
So my only question
Adding or reducing? I'm sorry.
You'll be adding because you just added fifty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So my only
Probably a hundred cans.
One of my concerns with this potentiality of buying used cans is we don't have I could see that delaying this project significantly. So we're either gonna set aside a set amount if we wanted to do that and do what we can with that amount. I don't think we need to hold up what Rear Pacific is gonna do for us to have a discussion on how many cans they have, what shape are they in, what kind of price can we negotiate? That could be a very intensive process. That's my only concern with that. I get what Mr. Telesco was saying, because he did clarify some other things that we thought were legislative intent that he says will not dive to the funding. But I don't, but I don't personally think that the representative and the senator pushed for us to get this money to buy used cans. I don't.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, with that being said, the only thing we need to do moving forward once we purchase cans is if the property owner already has a bear-proof can, we don't need to be giving them one for free because what we'll wind up doing is putting the waste companies at a loss because they, you know, they've bought these cans through the years and provided that service.
Yes.
And that's the only thing we just need to keep in mind is as we start distributing these cans, if someone already has a can, has a service, then, because to my knowledge, they just put a deposit down. So it's not like they're getting charged extra for having a bear-proof can. They would just basically, you know, theoretically, they would turn their can in, get their deposit, and get a free one from the county. And that would put our, the companies that service there in a loss. So we need to be mindful moving forward. But if you have a bear-proof can, you're not getting one for free, you know.
But once your can gets destroyed, then they'll get a county can to replace what, okay. I follow that. I'm with that. Cool.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question too, though. In terms of warranties, like what kind of warranty are, I mean, cause these cans, if they get messed up or the bear happens I know they said they're very good cans, but what happens if the bear does come and tear up the can and it's a county can? How does that work? Is it under warranty? Is it, is it, how good's the warranty for? Do you replace the can?
That's a question for you, Rodrigo.
I know that there's honestly, go ahead. I'll ask you a second question, Rodrigo.
Yes, yeah. For, for the containers, for the perishable cans, we have a three-year warranty on the body and the lid, and then a one-year warranty on the components. Generally, we really don't see a lot of warranties be submitted for the components. Really, the bears, unless a bear absolutely mauls a cart, these carts hold up pretty well out in the field. But yeah, anything that is compromised out in the field, we honor for three years. But you bring up a good point. For the carts that are currently out there, I'm not sure how the haulers are handling, you know, what they do or what they honor in regards to a warranty. That seems like it might get a little bit, yeah, in our experience, when a resident sees other, their neighbors or people in their community getting brand-new carts, they generally want a brand-new cart. But like you said, they also put a deposit down. Sometimes it's, it's a give-and-take situation because granted, some of the haulers may lose some of those deposits, but they're also getting and a very large amount of carts that are being delivered that they can possibly gain as new customers. So it doesn't work out for everyone every time, but there are concessions that generally have to be made.
Commissioners, without thinking this statement through, what I'm gonna say, can we and this is where the roundtable you ask about, Mr. Chairman, it has, this discussion have to happen, it should happen. Commissioner Amison, what about a no harm, no foul? How about we give, deposit or not, everybody gets a free can, but the current, our current haulers get to pick up their can but not issue, return the
Well, see, here's the thing too.
I know I didn't think that through. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, this whole thing's gonna be logistical.
Yeah.
I don't wanna say nightmare, but we do have a lot of logistics to work out because say, for example, I have Waste One, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, who, who's gonna pick up the can? Is it gonna be Waste Pro, Waste One?
Your current provider.
So your current provider's gonna pick it up? Okay.
And if you remember, Waste One said what they would do, even though it's a county can, they would put their sticker on it so they know that's their customer, even though it's a county
And then we gotta figure out who's gonna get the cans, or to know that they have a pretty good idea.
Rodrigo is right, though. If we're all living in the same neighborhood and three, you get a new can. I want a new can too. And I want my money back.
Yeah. The private market will solve that problem, I assure you.
Yeah.
Oh, what?
The private market. He just said, basically, when people see the new cans, hey, I can get my deposit back and get a new can. Hey, I can use that three hundred bucks to pay part of my electric bill.
Well, don't be complaining whenever your collection service goes up.
Yes, that might.
Yeah. I mean, they gotta offset their loss.
It might.
So.
There's definitely some things we gotta still work out with all of this, but I think the biggest thing right now is is to proceed with potential purchasing of the cans.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so do, I'm sorry, do you guys wanna set aside money then, or do you just wanna purchase all new cans? That's what we're really trying to say today, correct?
Well, I don't, I want new cans. I mean, I think I don't wanna buy used cans. That's me personally. I have all this money.
I'm good with that. I just, and I'm sorry for interrupting you, but that's what I understand we're trying to decide today, is what we're purchasing.
All this other stuff hopefully kinda come into play, figure out later. But we have five years to purchase these cans, right?
Well, four years.
Four years, so it is time sensitive too.
I hate to be doing this on the fly. Rodrigo, my question to you is, let's say, let's just say we go with, we, we get another proposal from you, an amended proposal for just a million dollars' worth of cans right now, and we hold back sixty thousand until the board decides what they wanna do. You know, we talked to Mr. Telesco, find out what FWC rules and requirements are about a buyback program. And let's say it doesn't work out. Will you sell us the cans at the same price for the remaining sixty thousand that we have? Or no, we can't, that's not working for you guys?
No, well, it really, if, if we do an initial purchase and distribution of a million dollars' worth of them, right, it depends on, is that second, is that additional sixty thousand just gonna be inventory? Or will you need those distributed as well?
No, it'll be just inventory.
Yes.
Yeah, so we can actually offer those, you know, fifteen, a little bit cheaper because we're not distributing them, so it would just be the flat two fifty per cart. But yes, I'll honor that initial base cart price.
Just a thought, Commissioners.
Well, if we're gonna do it that way, or if we're gonna consider that, then why don't we just leave the numbers like they are and use fifty-four thousand?
My wrong number?
You know what I'm saying? Because it's already got a quote. Let's do fifty-four thousand.
That makes perfect sense. That works for you guys?
Yeah.
And just for, for clarity for the Commissioners, I'm looking at, and I did update to get to the max amount. That max amount looks about, with distribution, three thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven carts total, so that'll be basically the difference. And keep in mind, the deliveries are just estimates, right? Whatever we don't deliver, you get the difference of that, you know, three thousand and change, so just, just a heads up.
Okay. All right. So any other thing we need to discuss before we get ready to make a motion?
No, I just
Mr. Chairman, I think we just need to get the cards, and then we can Mr. Chairman, I think we just need to get the carts, and then we can work out the-
Details, yeah.
We can get in the weeds with how we're gonna distribute, that location, because we still need to get with FWC, get the areas and, and everything.
But now the question is, do we have a place to put three thousand-plus cans?
Well, they're gonna distribute them.
Oh.
Well, some of them, but the store, so I know Virginia, I saw her locked in, so Virginia, you know they're coming out your way. Hate to tell you guys that, but the best spot is the road department, um, to be honest with you guys, that's-
Out in the field.
Yes, out in the field.
Okay.
We'll just put them over at firing range.
No, let's not do that. Let's not do that.
Our million-dollar cans will be gone.
Yeah, in no time.
Hey, if we can't smile and have a good time with this, it ain't working.
That's what I see.
All right, so is anybody ready to make a motion? Should we stay over there and discuss?
I'll make the motion to authorize the purchase of the can, the carts.
Canisters.
Canisters.
Bless you.
All right.
At, at the one, at my number, one million six thousand, and we're gonna hold back fifty-four thousand for a discussion about buyback.
Yes.
Cool?
All right, so we do have a motion to approve that by Commissioner Ward, who's been second, by Commissioner Crew. We're going with the quote that's in front of us for three, three thousand seven hundred ninety-three carts, knowing that there's still additional fifty-four thousand in funding that we'll, uh, determine later. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
I don't know, I'm not making those. All right, Rodrigo, thank you so very much.
Thank you all for your time, have a great rest of your day.
You, too.
You, too. All right, Commissioners, item number five, do I need to read it, or you guys feel sorry for me?
Well, since you messed up on that quote, read it.
Or if you can, well, you say if you can't have fun with this, then might as well not do it. So you guys-
We got plenty of time.
Yeah, plenty of time.
No, we don't. Go ahead.
You guys-
They have traveled to do-
You guys are aware of, you know, what's been happening ever since we had to hack into the .gov system. It's, it's basically been a nightmare. Um, most of my time is spent, I've authorized two or three times already for the, no, four times already for the morning, somebody get in. So, um, even our Microsoft, okay, so I know the board, let me fess up, I know you guys have been telling me to do this for quite some time, I've been resisting, Commissioner Crew is shaking his head, yes, but, and I'm not saying that the Microsoft vendor's opinion is more important than the Board of County Commissioners, I'm not saying that, but I will say, he said to me, okay, I need to let it go and get some professional help, especially to sort out the issues we've been having ever since the email hack. So I talked to, y'all know Kevin and Casey, we had a meeting, talked to them, and they're willing to do it, uh, sho- short-term, uh, to get all the issues resolved, and I don't want to sit here in a public meeting and tell you guys what, uh, the issues are. Um, and after we do that, then we could discuss a more long-term maintenance, kinda like upgrades type agreement, which, you know, shouldn't be as bad. But it's, there's a lot going on that needs to be fixed, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll say that Michael and I have talked about this, and I actually was gonna bring it up at the last meeting, because I know, me personally, this week, I've caught him several times, because my email, I've been trying to get on it online with it on my phone, and, and it gives me some error code. So I, I know we've had constant issues with it. Um, I do want, though, it, you know, with cybersecurity being a big thing now, and I spoke to you about it, we need to have a way, just like I got that phishing email, we need to have a way for people to, I guess, have, I don't know, education on what a phishing email looks like?
Yes.
And if they get an email, it's a, it's a phishing email, they can click a button, and that way, we know that someone's trying to hack and try to nail that down. So I'm all for this. I, I will ask, though, I know that we don't have to go out for bids, because it's less than twenty thousand dollars?
Well, I'm gonna ask the board to declare an emergency.
Okay.
So, um, yes, because I don't know if it's gonna last a six months or not.
Okay.
Yeah, so just in case. And this work also includes classes that everybody, including the five of you, will have to take because, um, we're on a .gov Microsoft, um, email now.
And that's what I was gonna ask Michael, was about training for, for this, because I know what the other organization we're part of, we got to have training on-
Yes.
What the phishing email look like?
Yes.
And, I mean, and it's so, it's so extensive, where we, there's some, we, we can say training all day, people ain't gonna take the training, but if we don't take the training, you're not getting through until you take the training.
Yes.
And that's probably something that we're gonna have to do, because it's so serious now, it's a big thing, and it's one of the, I mean, when I got appointed, you know, this was, this, this conversation came about before.
Yep.
And I recommended that, we needed to, look into, uh, an IT-
Yes.
-company.
So Commissioner, you are-
Because there's so much.
You are correct, and, you know, actually Casey referred to the same system that, procedures that you guys, when I say you guys, I'm speaking to you with your school district hat on, the same one with, with the train. So the goal here, besides fixing everything, is, and I know Commissioner Emerson and Commissioner, and the chairman's gonna look at me, the whole goal is to get cybersecurity insurance. But to get that insurance, to qualify for it, we have to take, we all, employees, you guys, everybody, we all have to take those classes-
I don't mind getting them.
-to be able to get that insurance. But that's insurance you two have been asking about for some months now. I think Commissioner Emerson started off more with Weems, and, you know, again, Casey and Kevin, that day, they're the ones that, uh, they're handling Weems now. I don't know how long that's been, but they, they are, so, yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I will say, too, this duo authentication, like, is that something that we need to look at, too? So like when I, when I sign into my email from my other job, I have to have a two-factor authentication process to know that, say, hey, that's Jessica Ward, not Michael Moron trying to get into her email. Is that, because I think that's something we need to look at, too.
That's, that's what you have now, so when it gives you that code, and you have to send me that two-digit code, it just happened so, because I had to do it in a rush, so I ha- I hold, maybe I shouldn't say it, but yes, we're, we're gonna get into the dual, yeah, we have it now-
We gotta be careful.
We have to, we have to refine it, let me put it that way. We have to tweak it so it's not as inconvenient as it is right now.
And we all have our own access-
Yes.
-for when I get up at two o'clock in the morning and, and just sending it to your phone, and you do-
That's the problem, though, see, that's the issue.
You think of somebody breaking into it, but it's actually me-
Yes.
-doing what I do early in the mornings.
At two o'clock in the morning, I'm like, yeah, I was like, okay, so what, what secrets does he have that they want? That's what I'm trying to wrap, yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and, and declare this a matter of emergency and authorize Eagle Tree Technologies to provide the necessary IT support at their rate.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, uh, this matter, or this action from Commissioner Ward, second, from Commissioner Crew. Any discussion before we vote? So I wanna clarify, Commissioner Ward, we've declared an emergency, we've stated that it would be at the rate that's in the Mr. Moron's report, and for a period of up to six months.
Correct.
I just wanted to make, clarify that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That is a five-o vote.
All right, Commissioners, so here is the fire that's in front of us, too. Um, so as we know, FWC Commission meeting is next couple of days, tomorrow and Thursday, and as, as far as I know right now, at the meeting, that the issue regarding the, the rule language for Atlantic Cola Bay oysters, they, they say statewide, but let's just focus on us, that was gonna be presented tomorrow after lunch, I think it had it scheduled for two, I'm not sure if that's still the current time. I received the most current language from Mr. Kramer on Friday, I distributed it to you guys, it's on the agenda, it's actually been on the agenda, all we considered public could see it, and read over it. I, I, I guess what I'm saying, since, um, you know, some Commissioners are traveling down there, the other Commissioners that are not traveling, do you want to have a discussion and see what, how to approach the situation tomorrow? Uh, I'm talking about, after you guys have read over the language, you have any issues with what's in there? Um, yeah, this is just for discussion, Commissioners. This is, this is it. If this is, if they actually accept the final language tomorrow, it's, it's it, we're stuck with this for a while.
We'll be stuck with it until we can get the Commission to change it.
Yes, sir, basically.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you don't mind-
No, go ahead.
Um, last week at the partnership meeting, I, I, I spoke with FWC staff on a few different things, well, I spoke as the chair of that committee, um, or that group, whatever, that organization. But anyway, the, uh, one of the big things I'd, I'd pose was this limited number of harvesters. Um, thi- this is, this is where I'm at with it, and I just wanna explain to y'all because I am gonna approach the Commission on this, is this first initial, um, opening, they're only gonna allow people that have actually harvested, has a harvest history, between a set amount of years, to participate in this. Um, now, I'm, I'm just throwing a, a, a round number out there, whenever the bay, uh, closed in these timeframes, or when it started, uh, i- its downfall, so to speak, we had upwards of four hundred people that had an active oyster license. And I don't know what the catch history was between that timeframe or not, that's just how many people were licensed to oyster. Um, my problem with this, and I asked, I asked FWC staff about it, I said, you know, if, you know, why, why is that, why is that language in there? Um, I can understand the initial opening, giving the, the traditional harvesters the opportunity, instead of it being statewide, or countywide for that matter, but moving forward, once, once this, this is, this is what hangs me up, once we, whoever, let's just say for, for, you know, a round number, let's say a hundred people get their license and they qualified to get it, traditional, you know, by all the criteria that they gotta meet in this, this opening, that hundred number is, that, that's, that's the number moving forward. So five years from now, ten years from now, they're only gonna allow a hundred participants. And I can't understand what the justification, and I asked them, I said, just give me the justification for why that, that language is the way it is. Why not just say, the initial opening is just gonna be for, they gotta meet this criteria, that's gonna be the, the number set for the first opening, and then after that, just say three hundred and fifty license? We got three hundred and fifty license available, you can buy them. You know, if you, if you meet whatever the criteria is then, which is just a bio valve endorsement and A V endorsement. You know, because what, in my mind, and I told them this, is that does, is that sets this up to, uh, basically, um, do away with the fishery in the long term, unless you can go back to the Commission and get them to change this. And I told them, I challenged them there, and, and, and I told them, I said, please show me, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful or be that guy, but show me anywhere in any fishery, state or federal government has taken something and given it back.
You have.
Never seen it. So for us to go in there and say, yeah, we're good with a hundred, or fifty, or whatever, whatever that number's gonna be, and then maybe down the road, we can come back to this Commission and we can increase this from fifty to a hundred, or a hundred to two hundred, it's not gonna happen. It just, it's not gonna happen. So what it's gonna wind up doing inevitably long-term is it's gonna shrink the fishery and completely close the fishery. That, that's, that's where I'm hung up, that's one part. And I will, I'm gonna bring that up, and I'm gonna try my best to try to condense all this in three minutes.
Good luck.
But, yeah, I know, hopefully I'll have some grace, uh, there. But now, another discrepancy that we have it with it is, is the actual, um, you know, the old five-gallon bucket, two five-gallon buckets, or the ten-gallon bucket, you know, they need to have a set standard and say, okay, this is the bucket, whenever you get, when they issue the license, they're gonna give a bucket, and say, this is what we're gonna measure by. Because what's gonna happen, a- and, and most of y'all know this, that a, that a sixty-pound bag is gonna wind up weighing eighty-five to ninety pounds. Um, I've got some, some issues with that, because what's gonna wind up happening, say, Ricky gets his five bags, five tags, he goes out and catches them, and then once they weigh it out, the dealer's stuck with six or seven bags.
All right, if I can get them in there.
Exactly, and then here comes FWC going, okay, you bought X amount of bags, where these bags come from? Now it looks like, you see, so now, who's gonna be, you know, who's gonna tote that fine? So it's just, you know, if they have a standard and say, okay, this is the, this is the bucket, this is how we're gonna measure, it would be a lot cleaner, it wouldn't, you know, court, I, I'm quite sure the courts would, would appreciate it.
Yes.
Because they're gonna exhaust staff, they're gonna exhaust court cost, because this is gonna be an argument, it's just gonna be a, a judicial argument, what it's gonna wind up being. That's a mess.
Yes.
Now, another thing, too, with the openings, okay? In this language, I don't see any forecast for summer bars.
They gotta close.
Now, the thing about summer bars, and we've had this discussion in, in the past, because there has been a group in, within the community initially, said, let's just close the, close the bay, you know, during this amount of time, and then just open it the rest of the amount of time, but that, that, that a lot of amount of time eliminates oyster bars. It's not, and, and people don't really realize this, but the oyster bars are the oyster bars, because that's the only time of the year that Department of Agriculture says they're safe to consume. You can't consume those, those oysters during the cold months, because the water's coming down, you know, that's a consumption hazard. So they open the bay wide open, and you're following within October and February, you can't harvest from those bars regardless, because that's a consumption hazard. Dax has got that closed. So if, if they don't have some type of language in there, say, just say they start doing some restoration proj- projects on the summer bars, and then they meet that four-hundred-bag threshold, well, that's just, you know, that's, that's oysters with this language that you'll never be able to harvest, because during October to February, that is a consumption hazard due to water coming down the river. So that, that eliminates that whole, you know, space right there that can be commercially fished. So I didn't see that in the language, that's another thing. And, uh, one other, one other thing is, uh, you know, when they determine to, or to start reopening bars, um, you know, they need to be, they, they just need to make sure that they're, they don't, they're not, my, my big thing is, is the colching moving forward. We gotta have colching, but they need to take a, a, a good survey of the bar. Let's say we worked this bar right here, it met the four-hundred-bag threshold, okay? Before they go and colch that bar, I think they need to take a deep dive and look, if it's still maintaining that four-hundred-bag threshold, there's no need in colching it and shutting it for a year, closing it.
That's another problem, when you shut it for a year, you just done away with that one for a whole year.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
So I mean, if it's still meeting, now, by all means, if it's getting pressure from the fishery, and, and it's fell down below that four-hundred-bag threshold, by all means, colch it. But don't go in there and just, uh, blindly colch-
Yes.
-on a bar that's all right, that, that is producing, because you and me both, all of us know, as you tong off material and it scatters around, it's gonna grow an oyster. A lot of those oysters on there that was almost legal, you know, and, and the next opening, they're all gonna be legal, so should, you know, there, there's a huge possibility, uh, that, that these bags will maintain the four-hundred-bag threshold until said time where you get a bigger amount of participation, put that much more pressure, then you can start justifying colching on, on bars that, that are productive. Um, it's just, you know, it's, it, those, those are the things I'm hung up on, those are the things that worry me, because this is gonna be the final rule. And, and like I said before, the only way any of this language is gonna change is going to be going back to the Commission. And, and I'm afraid that, uh, you know, seats change, faces changes, and these seats, it changes from a gubernatorial standpoint, it changes on that FWC Commission.
Yes.
You know, this Commission, I think they're been working well with us, they seem very receptive-
Yes.
-when we've been there, they, uh, you know, they moved that opening from October to January, I mean, they wanna help the people, but those faces can change, you know? I, let me put it this way, if I had a crystal ball and we were dealing with this particular Commission four, five years from now, I don't think we would have a problem getting a bigger fishery. But again, I've never seen something taken away from the commercial fishery and given back, and that goes for state and federal. And I've been doing this since I was big enough to walk.[1761.73]
Well, and, and Mr. Chairman, you know, we've all had discussions about this and, and everything, but, you know, like I said at the last meeting, I think they're putting something out there, the staff through this, you know, the rules and all, that is going to cause the oystermen to fail before they even start. And put the water, you know, tong in the water. Um, it's just like, I just said, that's one thing, you're going to close it at the bar when you get four hundred bags? And then you're going to re, redo it when it may not even need it? I mean, you know, that's it. And the one thing that I get is, you know, they're talking about, um, uh, restoration. The best thing you can do is work those oysters and be able to, to fix them like that. But my thing is, when you get out there and you could have to have clean oysters, no cuts whatsoever on it, no nothing on it. I mean, you realize what you're doing? You're killing all those babies and stuff that's been living in there, because they tell you they want clean oysters. You know, that's, it's hard, that's hard. But anyway, so, you know, what, you know, F W C is like, usually when they make a rule, they usually give you a year of implementation. In other words, that first, you know, season, or, talking about hunting, they give you, uh, implementation of, of a year in there. And that first year, they'll just give you a warning or something like that. In this two months, January and February, they're going to open it up. Why don't they say, since we don't know what the situation is, let's see how it goes? You know, and they're not, they're not doing, you know, the, it, it staff is recommending, no, it needs to be this, this, and this. And it's like you said, I think on the, on the applications, they should take it just like they did before. Somebody may not get an application between, or by November thirtieth. Don't have the cutoff date at November thirtieth, just as you have the application process, I mean, use them. And then when the oysters give out on the bars, that's when you say, we can't work this number. You may have three hundred oystermen, you may have ten, you may have fifty, you don't know. So I mean, it's just kind of, it's kind of iffy why they're doing it. I, I've never saw that happen before, and I don't believe it's ever happened anywhere else around this area.
And Mr. Chairman, just to address that, I think the reason why they have that cutoff date is because they had to have the number of participants, because they got a set amount of product they're going to allow to be taken off. So they have to figure out who's going to get what quota, you know, how many bags.
I understand that.
But, but I, I will say, I, I do want to make sure that, that, that we all understand something, because it was brought up with, from staff. But any, uh, major changes to what we have, or what they have going before, could potentially, if the, if the commission says, okay, we want to make these, these changes, this, this, this and that, then it could put off the January one opening and push it back to.
And that's what some of you don't want to do.
And that's why I'm saying, we got to figure out, I've, I've been sitting there racking my brain on how they can make these slight changes, like the participation, you know, moving forward, you can make, they could just amend that. That wouldn't, that wouldn't actually dictate, uh, anything on the initial opening. I'm just trying to figure out how I can make these arguments without interrupting the January one. But I will say, just from a personal, uh, position, if I, if I had to sacrifice January one to make sure that they don't potentially push this to a point to where we don't have a fishery, because I'm going to tell you, if it's a hundred people and we keep restoring this bay, a hundred people with ten thousand acres will never produce it. That's not going to help our economy, that's just going to help a few people. The, the way to get this fishery back open is, is to have it to where it's not limited to a set number of folks. It needs to be, it just needs to be open, you know. And if, if there's only so much that can be, uh, caught, so be it, you know, as we progress. The, the, the people will, you know, people are not going to sit there and keep getting a license to go out there and catch ten bags. I mean, they have to feed their family. Eventually, those folks are going to say, you know, this is too much sugar for a dime, they're going to go do something else. Where everybody's going to keep participating is going to get a bigger quota. And then as it grows, you know, those quotas are going to get bigger, then it's going to attract people to come back to the fishery as it grows. But if you lock it down to a set number, then it, you know, as it grows, it'll never help our commercial economy.
That's what I'm talking about.
We just got to try to figure out a way to, uh, to, to approach this to where we don't make such drastic changes. But it, it, like I said, my position personally is, is that if that's what it takes to make sure, to ensure this fishery is not, weeded out over a ten year period, I'll sacrifice January one, you know.
Here's what I would say about that, just a thought. I don't, I don't necessarily agree, I'm like you, I don't necessarily agree with them only taking the landings from twenty twelve to twenty twenty. Unless, because they're also talking about if, if they're, if, if, if I had a, they're using words that are, that are mixed, but they're acting like if I have a violation in, anywhere, up in the woods, fishing with a pole, anything, that that can keep me from being able to get an oyster license. But anybody can forget to put a whistle on their boat? Or their fire extinguisher should be out of date? I mean, it happens, it shouldn't, but it does, that's reality. So if you get a ticket and you pay it, that becomes a violation because you didn't fight it. So I, I, I think that might be a fight we can win, but I, I think that they're, for some reason, I think that staff is under this false sense that there's going to be four hundred people trying to go oyster. I don't think that exists. So what I, going with what commissioner was saying, I think they ought to allow whoever wants to get the license to get them. They might want to consider that if you get the license and for two consecutive years, you don't meet the landing requirements to keep it, then the third year, you can't get a license. That way you don't just have license out here, just have license. But if somebody's actually catching the seafood, they can retain the license. So I mean, I, I know that's a little bit of a change, but I would be in favor of something like that. I, I don't say one year because some stuff can happen. People can go through a time of being ill, or a sickness they didn't see coming, or something that might affect them. But if you do it with a two-year timeframe, I think that you, you know that those people aren't holding a license just to be holding a license, that they are intending to at some point.
Sort of like hunting quotas, you know, a lot of people get them hunting quotas to keep other people from getting the hunting. They don't even use them. See, so I agree with y'all on that reason.
Well, with that argument there though, you are talking about a drastic change. So that would be something that is, if, if the, if the commission so entertained that, it would, it would, uh.
Well, it's not something I thought about until we're talking about it.
Yeah, and I, and I've thought about it as well, because, um, and, and I've used that same example in my mind with, with, with quota, with hunting quotas. Because this is, I mean, it's not necessarily a hunt quota, but it does have some of the, share some of the dynamics of it, yeah. But the thing, the thing is, is, um, you know, they, they, they can have a hardship clause. You know, as I say, someone gets deathly ill between October and February, and, and it, it very easily could happen. You know, right now, it's just if you catch one bag, that qualifies you. It, I feel like, you know, there should be a bigger push to make sure that person is actually participating in the fishery. Not just going out there catching one bag to keep their. Exactly, and I agree with that. And, and that's something else that, that they, that I think that they didn't really, you know, think through. And that could be a part that we didn't really push that narrative neither. But, uh, that they had to at least meet their quota. Because this quota, I mean, you know, I've told y'all in the past, I got, I kind of got chewed out by some of the local folks at one of the workshops, because I was sitting there doing my math and they had, you know, and I'm sitting there going, if you got ten participants, this is back before, when they were talking about doing a limited entry. With, with ten people catching the equal amount of oysters, you know, you're only looking at twenty eight, twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollars a year is all that person would make on average. You know, um, and, and, and that's what I was trying, the point I was trying to make during that workshop is, is that if it's a, if it's fifty people, you know, they're making less than five thousand dollars a year. If it's a hundred people, you know, um, you know, go price a motor, boats, tongs. You know, I mean, uh, it's, 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 I just say it's a mess.
The one thing that I've heard a lot of too, because I, I, like all of y'all do, uh, one thing they're concerned about is also is the one bag per season recreational.
Per year.
Yeah, but that's, that's per season. Yeah, because they're only going to be allowed to harvest during the same timeframe. But my thing with the recreational is this, me and, me and some of the, uh, oystermen that were talking about it, you know, they haven't had, they hadn't had any restoration projects done on tidal reefs, which is something I mentioned F W C when we had our personal meeting that we need to find some areas. And they're, they agree with that, they need to find some tidal areas where they can do some restoration. With, with recreational, I would recommend it to not hold it to a four hundred bag threshold, they need to drop that down, I believe. Your, your commercial oystermen are not going to go out there on, uh, and, and, and mess around those bars. They're going out to the sub-tidal reefs. Now, the reality of it is this, and I know some people's out there, that they're going to, you know, argue it, there's plenty of arguments about it, but who is actually going to go out there with a set of tongs and, on these sub-tidal reefs and go recreational fishing? I mean, you, you know, they're, so that's where I'm kind of hung up with the recreational. And I'm not against recreational, so don't take it that way. But the only area that they're going to allow recreational harvest is going to be on these sub-tidal reefs. That's it, you're not going to be able to walk out there and hog up any oysters anywhere. So, uh, really, right now, and I know this is not going to be popular, but recreational harvest is really a mute point at this point, until we get some tidal reefs that have had some restoration done and people can go out and hog up oysters.
Well, if they took that limit down, uh, that four hundred, because they said this at the last meeting, I asked them about it specifically, the last workshop they did here, they were, uh, you know, Gulf County's been engaged trying to get in the lagoon kind of freed from all this, because no restoration's happening there, I agree with that. But, uh, in the meeting, I, I asked them specifically, if that area was still going to have to meet the same bag requirement, they ever start being harvested, they said yes. I said, it's never been commercially harvested. Never has it been commercially harvested there.
That's, that's why I say that, that, um.
It needs to be a different limit.
I think so. Yeah, I think it needs to be a different threshold.
Yes, yeah, that's what I mean, yes, different threshold. The other thing is the, uh, so if they are going to use twenty twelve to twenty twenty for the license, for the landings, they also need to use twenty twelve, twenty twenty, if they're going to do it, for the violation requirement.
I agree.
The violations need to be in the same year as you're taking the.
Oh, okay.
As far as the, the violation requirement, it's supposed to be a fishery violation, not, not a, uh, you know.
Here's the only problem I have with that, a lot of things with F W C and other agencies, not just them, it's up to officer interpretation. When you're out there and we're out on the water, it's up to how that officer interprets what they've done, not necessarily what they've done.
Well, the difference is, is like a, uh, and I'm not sure what the, it's not a moving violation. I don't know the, the actual language of it, but it, the, and it, it may just be my interpretation just through discussion, is that if there was, if there has been priors that's been out there with undersized fishery violation, undersized oysters, and that, that's what they're looking at. It's not, it's not, yeah, it's not a, you know, didn't have a life jacket.
The one time, it was everything. Yeah, hunting, fishing, whatever, seafood, what, all of it.
The one thing I want to say is, we've had, how many meetings with F W C? I think I missed one, and that was a week I was in the hospital. But my thing is, every meeting has been the same, and you know, Otis, it's been the same questions asked to them, and the same concerns asked to them. Instead of them addressing it, they just kept on doing what they're doing. We wouldn't have these, um, concerns now had they met the concerns earlier when they were brought up at these workshops. You see what I'm saying? And I don't know why they didn't do it, because I know on Bronson, at Bronson, when we said, well, it says prohibition of, uh, pro, prohibited possession of uncalled oysters, but then it goes down here and it says, well, uh, you can have up to thirty-three attached oyster. And the question was asked to Erica, well, isn't an attached oyster an uncalled oyster in some? And she said, yes. And he said, we'll ask her, and she said, yes. He said, is there something that you can do about that? And she said, yes, possibly. And that's all, I mean, that's it. So I mean, if there was concerns there, and it was brought to their attention, why did they not address them?
Because they've already got their mind made up.
They got their mind made up.
They already know, the, the workshops are just the same face, they already know what they're going to do.
And that's what it is, and that's my question.
And that's how I felt too.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, that's what I feel, but, you know, I.
But we're still going to fight, I mean, we, I'm, I know our, our, and that's why I'm glad y'all are going, because y'all are way more knowledgeable about this than I am, because I know my family worked on the water, but I never really, but that's the whole thing, and I, I think that's where the disconnect comes from too, is, is nothing against them, but they've never worked on the water, they don't know, they, they're going by the scientific thing about it. And science is science, but the fact of the matter remains, until you go out and you've worked that water, like most people in our community, they don't, they don't know.
And I know, I, I'm like Otis, I know I get hung up on things too, you know, like you said just a while ago, but my hangup is them curled, I'm worried about them curling the oyster because of the rock. And, uh, they don't know, has anybody went out there and curled them oysters off any of the rocks?
You're talking about the, the seventy-seven acres that they restored with? Now, that, that's, that's something, just for clarity, that's not going to be open for harvest.
And see, that's another thing.
That, that, that won't be, that won't be eligible to be open for harvest until October. Because there's a timeframe about them, that's not, that's not part of the four areas that's going to be oystable. Now, granted, uh, I don't think it's going to be, I don't think you're going to be able to tong it, just from some of the information I'm getting, because it's all kind of fused together, being bigger material. But now, now, but the, the big thing is with that is, is that, uh, you know, that's seventy-seven acres. And we're talking about vast majority of more acres out there for, for future restoration. Good thing, you know, if there is a sunshine to this, they've used that forty-six inch materials, which was, what they put out on that seventy-seven acres, it's not working. So that's more justification in the future to argue for smaller material. Hey, y'all have already ruined seventy-seven acres. Let's go back to a one to two inch material here. And hopefully, uh, you know, some of the other material sources like concrete and things that's been discussed will, will, uh, will, will play out and, and, and work for the benefit. But, but that, you know, that's, you know, that seventy-seven acres is not, it, that's not even a question on, on this, because it's not eligible to be fished yet.
Until October.
How many total acres would that, uh, of what, of, of historical reefs? Ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
And they want to restore seven thousand?
I'm sorry?
They want to do the whole ten.
They want to do the whole ten, but I mean, that's.
They've only gotten how many?
Seventy-seven.
That was seventy-seven on that pilot study. Now, the four bars that are, are going to be eligible for harvest that meet that four hundred bag threshold, this material's been out there for quite a while, you know, I mean.
I know in that, uh.
The only pilot study, only material that F W C themselves have put out is that seventy-seven acres of the forty-six inch, that's the only thing F W C has done. All this other stuff has, has come in from different pilot studies.
Kentucky stuff is smaller.
Do what now?
She has the back.
That is Kentucky.
I thought the Kentucky was the smaller stuff.
They have different sizes of it. This is, this, the, the, the material, the, the forty-six inch material is the Kentucky limestone. It's not li, you know, that's the lime rock. Now, the reason why they went with that material is because, um, I'm not sure if it was D E P or what, they used that material in a one to two inch size, and that bar is just flourishing, I think it's maybe one of the bars that they're opening. So that, that, that's why they said, okay, this is the material we want. The size became the issue then. Initially, F W C wanted to put out a, a ten to sixteen inch material, which would have been boulders. And, uh, and, and they, it was not cost effective, they had that size material, which kind of played to our advantage, because we were arguing the size of the material from, from the beginning, from that, that, you know, that ten to sixteen, that big, or twelve to sixteen, I forgot the exact numbers, but it was big. So it wasn't cost productive, so they had to bring it down in size. So they brought it down to a forty-six, which is what they deployed. So, um, you know, it, like I said before, the caveat is, is that if next October we get here, this, this seventy-seven acres now is going to be fished, it's, it's unfishable. this, this seventy-seven acres now is gonna be fished, it's, it's unfishable. There's justification right there moving forward on future restoration. Anything over four inches is absolutely out of the question, you know? It should be. Let's just put it that way.
Well, one thing I'll say, and I know it's been said a bunch over the years, about, you know, uh, they're approaching this because they're doing it with, following the science or whatever, and trying to do all the studies or whatever. It's already been done. Chesapeake Bay has been restored.
Mm-hmm.
We do not need to have the state continue to spend, you know, there, there, there's a lot of talk about Doge and their Doge in counties and cities, not Doge in theirself. FWC is a good place for fraud, waste, and abuse. Cause most of this money is going to fund their job and not actually going to the bay. Chesapeake has recovered. We know what needs to be done. We don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, as long as there's money there, they're gonna continue to drag it out and continue to make it along process, and this is more than needs to be. They say they don't wanna take local, uh, discussion on it. We don't, none of us know what we're doing. I submit that people like my dad and other people in this community that's, that have forgotten more than they'll ever know about the bay, know about the science, because they do it day after day after day. Because their results are what produced food on the table for their families. So, they know what they're talking about. These people in our community that have worked on that bay and know about the time and about with this, they know more than what can be learned in a book.
I agree.
And I am tired, I'm really tired of the conversation that says the locals don't know what they're doing, cause they don't have a master's behind their name.
That's exactly right.
I'm sorry. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, I agree.
That is ridiculous. That, I promise you, if somebody spent thirty or forty years on that bay, they know it like you know the back of your hand.
Well.
They know everything about it. And for someone else to say that I've got a degree, now I need to tell you how you're gonna live your life? They need to go find someone else to work, cause I'm really fed up with it.
Well, and let me tell you what my situation is. I have a real big problem with somebody being charged an exorbitant fine, possible days in jail over the violation of a rule compared to the violation of a law. You know what I mean?
Yes.
And I have, I have a big problem with that. These are rules to be followed.
It's a game they play, Commissioner.
And I know.
It's a game they play.
I know, I know. But a rule is a rule and a law is a law. And the, I mean, I, it's just the whole atmosphere of it. And, um, and everything. And I'm gonna do my best to, um, represent Franklin County, just like O- Otis will. But we got those folks depending on us, these folks in this county. And we've got, we've got to do what's in the best interest of the bay and everybody.
Well, I do wanna say, Mr. Chairman, pending the outcome of this meeting and then the rules that, that take place and what they decide upon, we as a board need to prepare for the next step.
Yep, we do.
So.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I will say this, Commissioner, not, not for you, cause you probably don't know this, but so the public is aware. So, the way the FWC in particular, and that's just who we happen to be talking about, the way they operate is they're able to come up with a rule, pass a rule, and enforce a rule.
That's right.
Right? Where it becomes a law is when I'm found guilty of breaking a rule and I'm ordered by a judge to be found.
She bless you.
Now it has become a law. I'm sorry, that is not the process we're under here in America.
I know.
We don't do all three forms of government under one roof, except for the FWC.
I know. That's my problem. That's my problem. That's what I said. And it's, I mean, and you wonder to yourself, how in the world you gonna fight that?
You can't.
You can't. But you know what?
It's a statute.
Change the Constitution.
It's a statute. Uh, you can't change the Constitution.
As I build climate.
Commissioner, there, there's more people in HOA in Miami than there is in Franklin County.
I know.
You're not gonna change the Constitution.
That's what I'm saying, as I build climate.
Now, you might, you might collect enough signatures to put it back on the ballot.
I'm gonna do it, it's the governor now.
The other thing is, that, that is good, so, uh, when you were talking about the, the colching.
Mm-hmm.
So, what they're proposing right now is it's still ten percent that they're gonna allow to get caught before they're gonna close it?
Yeah.
So, you shouldn't have to colch a whole lot. If you leave a ninety percent of the area.
That's kinda, that's what I mean.
Yeah, you shouldn't have to colch a whole lot.
That, that's been my argument about future colching, you know, and the bars like.
Yeah, don't just automatically.
Say these four bars.
Yes.
They go out and just because they worked it.
Yes.
Let's go back, get some data. If it meets that four hundred bag threshold, let's hold off on the colching.
Yes.
You know, until the next season, let's look at it again. Because as you oyster, and you know, anybody that's oyster knows, as you.
As you work.
Get an oyster, you work, push off, and you cut off, you're putting that material back out there that the oyster was attached to. There's another oyster growing behind it.
Yes.
You got all these oysters that was barely un, or that was barely illegal.
Yes.
That, that got culled back off.
Right.
Now, you know, three, four months later, those oysters have got new growth. They're now meeting that, that legal size. So, that threshold may continue to sustain itself, especially with the limited amount of pressure that it's gonna get, you know, because it's only ten percent, like you said.
So, as, as long as, I can tell you from doing it, as long as the spad are setting like they should, oysters typically, they don't go from just being small to being legal. They're all in between, and it's usually in equal amounts. So, if you're, as you're harvesting, if you're throwing back those ones that are two and a half inches,
That's what I was gonna say.
Or two and a quarter.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the next time it comes time to harvest, they're gonna be legal.
Exactly.
So, that should take care of all that, uh, in itself.
That's why I was stressing on, let's, let's pull this survey.
Properly.
Before we colch it, make sure it's, you know, there's no need in colching something that's meeting that four hundred bag threshold.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know if they'll give them to you, but since I'm not able to go now, one of y'all can ask for my three minutes. Maybe they'll give you some more time.
Let's see, that's a.
That's six minutes?
Yeah.
We got nine more minutes.
Nine more minutes.
We got nine minutes, we'll split that evenly.
Or, or ask them if they give you more minutes for your representative group.
Well, and, and like I said, I, I just believe that there's a lot of things that these first two months they can do.
Yes.
You know, that would probably improve it for October. Um, I just, I just think that they're trying to, to, uh, put a downside on it. They don't need to be doing that. Because like I said, if they'd been incorporating what the people had been saying, all these workshops, you wouldn't have no, you know, um, uh, concerns now. It would be all, they had, we support, it's one hundred percent. And, and as it is, you can't support it one hundred percent. Not if you're from Franklin County, where the Appalachia Cola Bay is our, one of our livelihoods, you know?
Yeah. So, another thing, Commissioner, at, at the partnership.
Mm-hmm.
Has it come up, because I think it did, when Commissioner Sanders went down to Bronson. We were talking about legal oysters.
Mm-hmm.
And how many, the undersized, how many is allowed? So, it's currently a rule, FWC rule. If I'm harvesting oysters and I have a legal, it could be a three and a half inch oyster, let's say it's above and beyond, and it's got four spat on it. It's illegal.
Violation.
It's a violation for me to pop that spat and to kill it.
Mm-hmm.
But are they gonna count that as five oysters?
Yeah.
Or one?
Well, that's part, as part of the percentage of attached.
That's.
But that's the way it's been forever.
Well, they do it by percentage, but I, I.
But now, it actually, I, I talked, I talked to the other. I talked to the other, uh, oysterman there, brought this up at that meeting. And all of them agreed that, that it's, and the way they're going with the count instead of the percentage, it's more in the favor of the oysterman.
Okay. That's all over the map.
And I talked to, uh, Mr. Roger.
Yeah.
Bruce Melander, there was, you know, a bunch of people there, and it was like, oh, well, this is actually more generous.
Yeah. Well, it's more straightforward.
Exactly.
You can, you can know just like they know. There's no guesswork. Yeah, okay. I just thought I'd ask while we're talking.
And I asked that same question, cause I wanted to make sure.
Well, that's the thing, there's so many parts to it, so it was just trying to get it all right.
Right, well, I had to.
And, and just like Mr. Sanders said, whenever I was sitting there trying to put that process in my mind, I said, you know what best I can do? Let's just ask the oysterman.
Yeah.
And like they said, it's better to go with the count than the percentage, so.
I found that place.
Oh, yeah, you're fine, Chris.
I, I've been to Miami before, but I never have been to Bell Blade. I've been to West Palm Beach, but I never have been to Bell Blade.
One I hear we need to be packing.
This one got GPS.
Any, anything else about this?
We could talk all day.
Oh, I know we could.
We are tomorrow.
Yeah.
I know we could. Mr. Merle, do you have anything else on your report?
Everything else I have is informational. However, we just got a, um, we as clerk, myself, and Aaron, just got an email. I need to unmute Aaron. Um, they, they missed some checks this morning, and they'd like, uh, the board, she's gonna list them. You guys to get a separate motion for those checks that were missed from the regular check run. Aaron, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, hey there, Commissioners. Um, the Finance Department sent a message earlier that several invoices were missed on the check run for this morning. Uh, they are requesting board authorization to issue the following manual checks totaling twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. Um, for the following vendors, we have Tide Marketing, Forgotten Coast TV, Bay Media, Key Data, LNS Lawn Service. Uh, so that would be a total of, uh, five different vendors for twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-four cents.
Okay. So, this is, this is an add-on item. I need to call for public comment.
Please.
All right. Anyone in the room that wants to comment publicly about this? Before we potentially take action? Mr. Merle, what about, uh, via Zoom?
Anyone attending via, uh, via Zoom would like to comment on this? Late add item. Additional, uh, checks for the check run. Bill this payment. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
So, move, we gotta get Royce paid.
Okay.
All right.
I just looked at Arizona, we weren't paying you this week.
So, a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Jameson. Any discussion?
Only if he shares his snacks.
All in favor?
I don't know.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Anything else for Mr. Merle?
That's it.
Uh, Mr. Merle, I do have something, uh, on, as far as meetings go.
Mm-hmm.
And I know January's relatively far away, but it's really not. Um, we do have Legislative Day. Probably gonna have to change our meeting in that month anyway, cause I think, let me look at my calendar. So, Legislative Day is, well, I guess we won't, let me see, will, will we have to change our meeting? Yes. So, the twenty-first is Legislative Day, and that's also a meeting day.
Okay.
So, we need to look at changing that.
Okay. I'll add that to the next.
Thank you.
On my report.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I had something. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just quickly, just a discussion I wanna have, uh, put on Mr. Merle's report next, our next meeting, uh, discussing our engineering companies.
Wow.
I wanna put that on the report.
So, uh, and so my report's gonna be, we want the board to be able to add, like other cities and counties have more than one engineer record.
That's correct.
So, I'll add that to my report.
Okay.
Continue with services contracts.
So, uh, in addition to that, I'd also like to make sure the board is informed. I was gonna do it later, but Commissioner brought it up, so we'll go ahead and talk about it now. At our last Regional Planning Council meeting that I chaired this last week, we have been working for, I don't know, the last six or eight months. So, we've had this at the Planning Council, service the region. We've had this back and forth, because the, we can keep increasing the size of the staff, but at some point, we're gonna need a different building, you know, it has its own situations. So, what we've done as a planning council, representing all of our nine counties, is we have went through a process of, with nine different companies, or who responded, and they're performing different levels of service, so they're not all like what Commissioner's saying. But we have basically made contracts with nine different firms that gives the Regional Planning Council more bandwidth. If the counties have a need, and it's something the council can't take care of, then we have a contract with someone else that the counties can utilize. Now, it's not, say, for instance, if it's XYZ firm, it's not everything they do. We have partnered with them for specific things. So, a firm might do twelve different things they say they do. We might have a contract for three. But it's something that allows the, the counties more flexibility. And I, I meant to include that and give it to Mr. Merle. I'll have it, I'll have email it to him after the meeting today, Michael.
Okay.
Just so we can have it for information.
Okay.
That's, that's good.
Yeah. All right. Anything else for Mr. Merle? All right. Return to shore before we go to you. Let's take a five-minute recess. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Attorney Michael Shiller, we're going to your report.
All right, commissioners, the first action item on my report is for the board to select one of the slate of December dates that I have cleared with Mr. Laura Gutcher Mills for the rehearing on the PUD evaluation ordinance.
Okay.
Those dates are December 2nd, 8th, 11th, 15th, and 18th. December 9th is available, but not preferred because Mr. Laura says she has a morning public hearing in another county and it would require a great deal of travel for her. However, if that is the only date available to the board, she would be available for that date.
I would not, I'll be out 11:15.
So is it the 18th or the 2nd is what you're saying?
Second, 8th, or 18th. The country.
You said that.
Country.
The 18th you'll be out.
Yeah, I'll be out. No, 11:15, sorry. 11 and 15.
The 2nd's a Tuesday, the 8th a Monday, and you said the 11th the only other day?
Yes.
That's a...
No, the 11th to 15th is not going to be here.
Okay.
That's correct.
So 2/8, 3/8.
Let me ask you something. I mean, because I don't even have a calendar I'm looking at. But how about we do it the afternoon on one of the board meetings?
Well, he's got a, with Laura, he's got these dates specific, because those are the days of Laura.
Okay, that's the dates.
Right. And then when we meet on Wednesdays, that would conflict with Commissioner Crews' evening with the church.
Oh, okay.
At least, that's, that's my recollection. That's why I will stay away.
Well, it'd probably conflict with the public, too. I mean, if you're doing it that day.
Yeah, you're gonna have a lot of paperwork.
I'm good with.
I'm good with the 2nd or the 18th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I prefer the 2nd, myself.
Yeah, let's, if we do the 2nd.
December 2nd is the consensus, commissioners?
Sounds good to me. Is there a time?
5:00.
5:00.
5:00 PM. And then the next action item is for the board to.
Hold on, do we need to vote on that? By motion or by?
That's fine.
Okay. So we've discussed doing on the 2nd at 5:00 o'clock. I would entertain a motion for that.
So move.
All right. So a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crew. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a 5-o vote. Go ahead, sir.
Second action item was direction from the board regarding when you want to hold the workshop on the code enforcement ordinance. I'm assuming in January, but I did not suggest any dates because I'm not sure which, when the board wants to hold the meeting.
Yeah, I think it'd be better to move that to January.
Um.
That's something we should be able to do in a work, in a regular commission meeting, shouldn't it?
Entirely up the board. I show up when I'm told to.
Well, we do it like this. We could. Well, we do it, if you can't do it at the regular meeting, why couldn't we come back in at 1:30 and finish it with the.
That's, that's where I was getting at, just do it on a work, on a, on a commission meeting day.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
I agree with you.
I don't believe that's going to be as contentious of a.
I say, well, we're gonna have to change, I can't, I'm not gonna be here for the 7th meeting, because I have, I'll be out of the country. That was when we, the 7th, January. That was when we originally had our meeting scheduled on the opposite days. I had scheduled something, and I can't get out of it, because I've already pre-booked. But the 21st, we'll have to change that meeting anyway.
To the 20th.
20th.
So, let's go ahead and do it, because we can do it in the afternoon of the 20th, because that won't, that's a Tuesday. So we're gonna have to move the 2nd meeting in January.
Oh, in January, my bad. Okay. I was looking at December, that's why I was confused.
From the 21st to the 20th? And so it's a Tuesday afternoon, so hopefully if we do it that afternoon, there's no conflicts with that. So we do it 1:30 or 2:00 on the 20th?
That's the 2nd meeting in January?
Yes, ma'am.
What time are you wanting to do it?
I was saying after lunch.
1:30.
Okay, as long as it doesn't go past 4:00, I'd East Point, we'd remain at 4:00 that day.
Okay, it should, yes.
If you have it 1:30, 2:00, it should be out.
So Commissioner, January the 20th at 1:30?
Yep. And we'll do that by motion and vote?
Yes, sir.
So move. Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward, scheduling this code enforcement workshop for the 20th of January at 1:30. Any additional discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioner, the next three items at your discretion in decision can be handled through consent. Items three and four are the TDC administration contract extension, which the board selected the Apalachicola Bay Chamber to provide those TDC administrative services from November 1st of 2025 to September 30th of 2027. The next action item would be the approval of the written contract and authorizing the chairman's signature on the fire and rescue rate study that the board has previously approved for the assessor group. The third item is, was included not on my report, but in an email that I sent to each of you individually last night with my report, that if I received the signed amendments to the Sylvester Williams Park lease, I would bring that up today. I got that from Mr. Hartman about an hour and a half ago. The amendments are as shown in the email draft that I sent to you and underline changes that have been suggested by your grant administrator, Ms. Bree Robinson. So if the board would like to handle the three of those on consent, then you can, or if you want to discuss them individually, we can do that as well.
Well, if you are wanting to do them on consent, either way we do it, we need to call for public comment for that last item, correct?
Yes, that would be fine.
So explain the last item again to make sure the public is aware.
Explain the changes on that lease?
Yes.
All right, just one second, sir. All right. Oh, come on. All right. The paragraph two of the existing lease is being amended to add the word recreational, and then to add the, a new sentence to paragraph two to the existing lease. It says, "Nothing in this lease is intended to prohibit or restrict use of the premises consistent with funded grant applications." Amending section four to add the following language to the existing lease. The existing lease says it expires on December 31st, 2075. The amendment would, would add the following language, "Or at least 25 years after completion of any grant-funded project, whichever comes later, the lesssee will not apply for grant funding, which would extend the term of the lease past December 31st, 2075, without first obtaining written consent of the lessor, which is the city of Apalachicola." It also adds the following new provision to existing paragraph four. "The lesssee shall have the right to execute a site dedication in connection with any grant funding obtained by the lessor directly benefiting the premises. In the event of any such dedication extends beyond the term of the lease, the lesssee shall obtain written consent from the lessor before executing the dedication." In addition to paragraph 22 of the existing lease, which adds the following language, "This lease is not revocable or otherwise terminable by either party without cause." Those are all the changes. Oh, and it adds a new exhibit A, which is the survey of Sylvester Williams Park.
Okay. All right. So are y'all good with doing all these on consent together, since they're the same kind of thing? Or do y'all want to pull one to discuss it individually?
I'm okay with consent.
Okay. So I will call for public comment before we make a motion or vote. Since this is a, something we were notified of, but it wasn't on the published agenda. Michael, there appears to be no one in the room. See if anyone has raised their hand online.
Anyone via Zoom would like to comment on this item? Sylvester Williams Park lease with the city of Apalachicola? Proposed changes? No hands raised, sir?
So I would entertain a motion to approve them all on consent.
So move.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Crew?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, unless you have questions for me about my information items, I will not go over them, except to update with new information on the ARPC contract draft for ship services. I, after I prepared and published my report yesterday, I did receive an email from the ARPC attorney. I have not had a chance to review that as of yet, but they did respond.
Okay, good. Anyone have anything for Mr. Shiller?
I do. You still have not heard from Barnacle. The, the Barnacle.
Just the, the signed return receipt on the certified mail that I delivered.
That they give us in your letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I will say, I spoke with some sheriff's office representatives about this, and is there any way, I guess the, the question was the service or lack thereof? Is there a way that we could put a booster down there, or some kind of a way to, if they do decide they want to keep this, is there a way that, I don't know how that works down there?
We can't. It would have to be one of the providers, the Verizon or someone that wants to invest something like that.
All right. That's all I need to say. Thanks.
All right. Anything else for Attorney Shiller? All right. So we are to Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to update the board. As all you know, we had our meeting with CHP, and we asked several questions. For one, I was given, you know, the, a packet of doctors that they say we have here in Franklin County, and we do not. I actually took the liberty of calling each doctor, and all the doctors, now, some of them are like vascular surgeons, OB-GYNs, psychiatrists, things like that, but all of all the doctors I asked, do y'all have office hours in Carabel or Apalachicola and Franklin County? Their response was no, that the doctors do not come. I said, well, I know they don't, because, well, my mind always saying, I don't want to say it then, but, but they have the addresses of the health department, both in Appalachian and in Carabel, saying that these doctors have office hours there, and they do not. So I was trying to emphasize to the CHP representatives that they think that we're served or being served, and we're not. We're underserved. They have three pri, three primary physicians on that sheet saying that they're, they have, that we have available in our, in our county. One is Patrick Conrad. He is not a primary doctor. He does ER at Williams. They have Ryan Farr, who has not taken new appointments till February, and as we all know, people who need a prescription refill or something like that, they can't wait till February. And then the third one, actually, there were four, Patrick Brown, who I haven't ever seen him over at North Florida Medical. I don't even know if he's even comes to the county anymore.
He's the license they work under.
And then the other one was Lionel Catlin, who I called his office just to kind of pretend like I was a patient, and left a message, and I'm still yet to hear back from them. So, so that's the healthcare we have in Franklin County, and I was trying to emphasize to CHP that y'all say we're, we're served appropriately and we're not. And we have a nurse practitioner, as we all know, who should, who's applied for a contract with CHP. We have a lot of people that went to her and got denied, because she was denied by CHP, so she's having to send her patients elsewhere, which, again, I just reiterated what we have and what we don't have. So I did kind of, kind of fight for that. I said, you know, can you please revisit her application and try to reestablish her being under your contract, so that we can have people go? We talked about the autonomous nurse practitioner rule. It is a new rule. They're still trying to wrap their head around, so they are kind of on the fence. They prefer a primary actual MD in the facility. I said, well, that's not going to happen, because it's not happening. You go to each facility here, you don't see Patrick Brown over at, at NFRC. You don't see, you know, any of these doctors in these nurse practitioners offices. So, so I basically just kind of ran that home, and then to, I got an email, and I don't know if Erin's still on the line, but last week after our meeting, and Michael, you could pick through at any time, anything you remember, we did get an email from them saying that Dr. Dixon, who is an OB-GYN, is now going to be over in Carabel. So I guess they realized that he wasn't coming, and now all of a sudden, now he's, he's going to be coming.
Well, that's good.
And they also asked if we could do virtual appointments in, like, the clinics, which we do have that capability, which me, as a, as a healthcare provider, I don't want to look at you on a computer screen. I've got to stick my stethoscope to your chest to see if you're wheezing, or, or pulp socks on your finger, to see if your oxygen level's adequate. So I don't like that virtual. I know it's for our residents that don't have transportation. It's good for them, but again, I guess that's an option that we, we also talked about. I also asked about bridging the gap, you know, with them building the new facilities over at, the teammates' facilities over in Panama City Beach, if they were going to kind of bridge the gap between Gulf and Bay Counties. And they did say in 2027 that they are looking at doing that. They have to get the contracts and all available for the doctors over there. And what else did we, it was, overall, I think it was a pretty good meeting. I did ask about our DME company, because I know people who have DME have had to go to Tallahassee to get a CPAP machine, or oxygen equipment, or a rolator, things like that. And I said, you know, we have a, a place here locally that we need to have you guys contracted with, and they are contracting there with Clinicare in East Point. So if we need a DME, or our citizens need DME, they can go over there. Physical therapy came up. I know a lot of people need physical therapy in their home. I know they were looking at entertaining a, a local physical therapist that have, has been, I don't want to call his name out, but, but he's had a contract signed, and then decided that he's got so much business, he doesn't want to add more to it. So he backed out. So if anybody knows a physical therapist that, that does local physical therapy, that wants to do a contract with CHP, let me know. I've tried to ask around, and I can't find anybody that's.
Mr. Chairman?
Jessica, I just found out yesterday that St. James Bay, Arabella, is doing physical therapy, outpatient for physical therapy.
Are they doing outpatient now? Okay, I didn't know that.
I didn't know it either. My cousin had a recent knee replacement, and she got referred to them to do her therapy there.
referred to them for, to do her therapy there.
That's good.
So that's good, so maybe they need to know that too.
Yeah, got that credential and understand.
Yeah, but all in all, I think, I think that they, they think that we're served better than we are, and I feel like that the meeting, I, I reiterated the fact that we're not, I feel like we're still underserved and, but I feel like at the end of the day, it was a good meeting with, with some information that they just, like the FWC commissioners, they weren't aware, they're, they're not aware, and they're not aware, I did ask too, I said, how often do you guys go back and change your, like, make sure these doctors are still here, or how many office hours they pick, or how long it takes to, for someone to get into a primary care physician? And they, they do, they did say they do call and try to keep up with that, but I feel like at the end of the day, we kind of educated them on some things, and I think it was all in all a good meeting. If you want to add anything, Michael, if Aaron's on it, she wants to add anything. I still need my notes back here, I don't know if she's there, I took a bunch of notes and I gave it to Erin and I forgot it was on the back.
You'll never see those again.
Probably won't.
Hey, we usually shame duck to blame the attorney, oh, we never do that to Erin.
It's all good, she's talking about something that's written down, she'll never see that again.
I still have them, actually, they're on my desk. I never throw anything away, fortunately.
No, she don't, I can attest to that.
Well, I wasn't gonna go that far, Erin.
I do have some stuff on the back of one of those sheets though, Erin, I was looking for my notes, I'm like, where did my notes go? Because I wrote them in two different areas and I was like, I think they're on the back of the sheet of the pamphlet I gave you.
Okay, gotcha, I'll, I'll pull, I'll pull them for you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Erin, she's keeping us honest, if we'd have talked really bad about her, it'd been bad.
That's a quick way to get her back on Zoom, yeah.
That's all I have.
So just to update the board, part of the meeting we had the other day with the ARPC also, it was held at the Tallahassee Regional Airport is where the meeting was held, and they're still, they have been working for a couple of years now on getting a international freight zone designation that should they get it, we could apply under them for our airport, because it's one of those 60-mile radius as a crow flies for the FPC. That might not mean anything today, but at some point in the future, if we do get any kind of businesses that locate here, that might be something that could be attractive to them. So just know that that's been a federal process, so it's three years long like all the rest of them, but they're getting close to the end, they've only got a couple of things left out of a list of about 10 things they had to do to try to qualify.
I've got two items, I'm gonna be going down to Alligator Point to the ACTA meeting, the taxpayers meeting this weekend, and one of my questions I'm gonna ask is when do they want to have that town hall for the special zoning, look at the special zoning for Alligator Point, Dog Point area back down there. The other item is, been brought back up to my attention, Landarch last night at their monthly meeting, and that was the pharmacy at the Carabelle Clinic in, in Carabelle. We're still needing something over there, so we need to get on the stick with Mr. David Walker and see where we're progressing.
So you know the Williams meetings are held here now, so I was paying attention. So yes, they're gonna come to the board and, because what, basically what the decision is going to be, are we gonna stay critical access or move to rural? That was, that is a big deciding factor about the pharmacy over there. So that's, if, if the board is ready, if we're gonna stay critical access and keep the, with the 5-0, anyway, whatever the code is for the, yeah, for the, for the pharmacy, then they can do it. If we're gonna go to rural, they can't. And that's, they want to discuss that with the board, so they...
Right now, we're critical access.
Yes, yeah.
So we're, we're okay with that.
So they're on plan to come and discuss that with this board at some point in the future.
And I'm glad that they're talking about it too because the people are really interested in that, and I got to say this, like Erin said in her report, the EMS unit out there, Landarch is just about completed, I think the walk, the final walk will be Friday. Well, now, the people are so excited about having all that, well, how about getting us a health clinic out here? How about getting us a rural health clinic out here? I said, let's see what we can do, that's in the future, we're, so, but they're tickled to death, I can't wait. And I, Erin's gonna plan the open house for the EMS building out there sometime in December, so we won't get that done. And to Robertson Roberts is doing the final paving, the last leg and the last phase of Highway 67, so hold your breath.
Yeah, I was just, I'll tell Commissioner Sanders for your meeting this weekend with ACTA regarding the, this proposed overlay, there, there were a couple of bills filed in the legislature to give relief to certain people, not including Franklin County, from Senate Bill 180, so unless those bills are amended to include us, we would still be subject to the restrictions of Senate Bill 180.
Really? And I heard, I read two articles that said they were gonna do the entire, the entire, this, the panel.
My information's about a week old, I haven't updated it.
No, mine is older than yours, I can't believe that.
Change of council, I can't keep up with it.
As of a week ago, unless those bills have been updated or they're amended as the process moves forward, we're still going to be subject to the restrictions of Senate Bill 180 regarding ordinances that make development more restrictive or burdensome or words to that effect.
I'll do it.
That's ridiculous.
I understand.
I'm gonna keep it, I'm gonna keep it quiet.
And also to let you know, the, the motion to dismiss the Burt Harris claim was filed yesterday as well, so.
To dismiss? What'd you say?
The motion to dismiss the Burt Harris lawsuit was filed yesterday. No hearings been scheduled, but the motion's been filed.
Okay.
Wow. That's disappointing.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do, about the 540B, and that, that's the pharmacy.
Yes.
Should our lobbyists be pushing to get that included with the REH model? Should we, should we engage with our lobbyists?
We could, but we'd have to engage with them federally. They do have that bandwidth, but we, that would be a separate contract, they do have, so Capital City Consulting, our lobbyist?
Yeah.
Does have a federal R now, they've had it for about two years, but that would be a, because that had to be done at the federal level.
Okay.
But yes, we could do that.
Right now, we engage with them state level, we would need a separate agreement for federal level.
Which there's other things we could do federally as well for transgender and other issues that we, you know, so that might not be a bad thing to discuss.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's something we might want to look into.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question? You know, a lot of people's benefits have been cut out at the federal level, and that concerns me. I know I've been watching the TV from South Georgia and North Florida, and they're talking about the food pantries are in dire need. I just want to make sure that if our folks in Franklin County needs food, that we're able to supply the need. And I'm just, I'm just making this statement out here, and I, I know we'll discuss it in a different time, but it's just according to what's gonna go on at the federal level. You mentioned the federal level, that made me think about it.
Actually, the Chairman reached out to me about the same thing yesterday evening and...
I'm concerned.
Yeah, and I told him, I guess the best route for me to take is to reach out to Franklin's promise to, hopefully they have a...
A list.
They have a list or they're in touch with all our food pantries to see who has what, you know, what's, what's, what is needed most, you know, that type of information and then bring it back to, to this board.
And Michael, if we can get something together to make sure the public is aware, 100% sure, I think we need to try to gather up some kind of document or some information that we can then publish, either on the county's website or social media, individuals, Commissioners, to make sure that people are aware of when these food pantries will be having food available for people to get, you know, just, it'd be a good thing to do.
Okay.
In the midst of all this stuff.
I think it would be too, and I just, you know, I know I'm concerned about Second Harvest because Second Harvest funds all the smaller counties and bigger counties and everything and, and from the, from the interview they were doing, they kind of dwindled down pretty low. You know, we have a lot of the Second Harvest coming here and, and I'll, but anyway, it concerns me.
All right, I'll try to have something next to me, some information.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
You're in this.
Safe drive, y'all. Safe drive.
Ladies and gentlemen.